Good evening, everyone. Can I, can, am I, am I projecting enough? Yes, okay. Yeah, welcome to our December work session. And we will begin with, oh, so let's go ahead and call this meeting to order. We are, I believe, at quorum. So we'll start with our roll call. Superintendent Scott.
Heidi Hensley. Mary P. Bagby. Linda Davis.
Here.
Dr. Patricia Jaeger.
Here.
Tim Denson. Dr. Lumbi Anderson.
Here.
Dr. Lakeisha Gant.
Here.
Nicole Holm.
Mark Evans.
Here.
Okay, so yes, we do have a quorum and we'll go ahead and start with our agenda. So for the superintendent, oh, sorry, not, the board, the board president's report. I have just a couple of announcements and they're informational. And then our VP will also share some announcements from the takeaways from GSBA. So first off, if you look in your email this afternoon, I shared the final, hopefully, ultimate announcement based for the superintendent's search. And this is based on everyone's feedback on the, the document that was shared a couple of weeks ago. They would like to go ahead and distribute that in the first of next week. So if there are any final, last-minute changes that you would like to see on that document, please share that with me by noon tomorrow. I am going to greenlight, releasing that announcement to GSBA's search folks by end of day tomorrow. We have a couple of things going on next week. I know that everyone's really busy for the holidays. But we do have a hearing that will require a quorum next Tuesday? Next Tuesday. If you are not able to attend that hearing, please let Mr. Evans or myself know as soon as possible so that if it does need to be rescheduled for lack of quorum, we can do that before the holidays. Per the policy, we need to have this hearing by a certain window. And so it's really important that we either reach quorum or are able to reschedule it ASAP. We also have our holiday dinner on the 16th at 6:30 at Hilltop Grill. Hope to see you there. January's meeting is moved to the third Thursday. So we will be meeting on the 22nd of January because of the late, is that right?
Technically, we need to vote on it.
Technically, we need to vote on it. So no. The 16th, not the 22nd, okay. But technically, we still need to vote on it. So tentatively, we will be moving our January board meeting to the, whatever that next Thursday is from when we would have originally had it, January 15th. And then lastly, just for information purposes, and so you all are aware that this is how we will be conducting our meetings moving forward. Mr. Evans will be facilitating the discussions by going down the line and back up the line and calling on each member for any thoughts that they have on each agenda item. He will also be keeping time to ensure that everyone has the sufficient amount of time and equal representation to address their concerns or questions throughout our work sessions and our meetings. And this will hopefully ensure that those who have potentially felt like they were skipped over or missed in previous meetings feel like that there's an equitable sort of flow and process for us providing feedback or asking questions at our work session and board meeting. And then, Mr. Evans, if you've got any announcements?
Yes, first I'd like to say thank you to you all for last, last month. I, as, I'm, I'm pretty open about the fact that I, I live with major depression. And this has been a very tough year for me and it kind of all caught up with me last month. And I appreciate all of you, your support, your phone calls, expressions of, of just concern was, was very telling and moving. And I, I appreciate that. Thank you very much. So I had the honor of representing Clark County Schools with Ms. Davis and Dr. Scott at GSBA. They asked us to come back with you with something that they haven't done in a long time, which is day at the Capitol. Before COVID, they used to have day at the Capitol every year. And they, they sort of stopped doing that after COVID. Well, after the past couple of years have been kind of disastrous for public education, they have decided that we are going to have two days on the Hill this year in 2026. So February the 4th and February the 11th, those are both Wednesdays. They will be having us meet and then they will give us our marching orders. Now, in January, they are going to set up trainings for those who have never lobbied before. And they have also asked if, if we have students who would like to participate, that, to bring them along because the, the folks who are against public education have no problems bringing out the troops for their point of view. And so they want to make sure that our point of view is, is, is also heard on the Capitol. So, so again, it's February the 4th and February the 11th. I plan on attending both days. So if you want to carpool with me now, I'll tell you, we're gonna, we're gonna carpool down to probably Johns Creek and then we're gonna take the MARTA in because I do not like driving down in that part of the town because it's a little crazy. But yeah, so that's what GSBA had me, had asked us to bring back to you all. So again, and again, thank you all very much and happy holidays.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Okay, we are now ready to move on to item four. And this is our policy discussions. The first three are first reads and then we've got some that are ready to have any final discussions before moving to our, our regular session to vote. So the first is exchange board policy, JQK, exchange students. Mr. Evans, do you see any?
No change in recommended, so.
Okay. Any board members have any thoughts on?
I was just gonna go, I'm sorry, I was just writing everyone's name down real quick.
Oh, okay, yeah, sure.
So that way I can make sure that that's right. Ms. Bagby, do you have any comment on this? Ms. Davis, do you have any comment on this?
No, I'm glad I had a chance to, well, it made me actually read all the regs and things that go along with that and I found it to be very informative. So yes, I'm, I'm glad and I see no changes. So I'm, I'm okay with that.
Dr. Jaeger. Mr. Denson. Dr. Gant. I have nothing to say.
Okay, so that will now move to the next phase of our policy process for public comment and then a second read in January. Next up is board policy, GBP, professional personnel reemployment.
Ms. Bagby, do you have anything that you would like to discuss with that? Ms. Davis?
Yes, it does say reemployment. And as I read it, it just sounded like a renewal of contract. So this is meant to be just explicitly a renewal of contract, right? It doesn't have anything to do with someone having been separated and coming back. All right, I just found the language a little bit interesting, but yes, no worries.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Dr. Jaeger. Mr. Denson. Dr. Gant. I have no comment. Dr. Anderson?
Okay. Dr. Gant?
Does, oh, yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, Dr. Gant.
That's it.
I just wanted to clarify with that May date, Dr. Scott, that is, is that like regulated by law? The, the time by which we have to notify people that their, their contracts may not be being renewed? Or?
Mr. Schwartz, if you would please respond to that.
Yes, that's the, that's the date that they require that we notify them the last, the last day. So we can't notify before that, but that's the last day that we have to notify.
Anything else, ma'am?
All right, up next we have, so that one's ready to move forward to public comment. Second read. Up next is policy DG, depository of funds.
Ms. Bagby, do you have any comment?
Ma'am, can you turn on your, your microphone? Mrs. Bagby, we couldn't hear you.
I have no comments.
Thank you. Ms. Davis?
I have some questions and I'm not sure if this is the right place for it. I'd love to have a discussion around, the language says, you know, that is very explicit about taxpayers' dollars, state, federal, and local in terms of us having oversight of that and the depository there. But it isn't, and I think it said for other school donations, right? And I have a question about understanding how our athletic programs fit into this policy, how the support they were getting at the Career Academy fits into this policy? Or is there a separate policy governing those kinds of funds? Because those are funds that are not maintained by the district yet. So this, it seems like there's, I read a conflict in there and maybe it's just me not understanding the language well.
And so I'm assuming you're talking about, when you say athletic, you're talking about booster clubs? And then the funds that the Career Academy has with the Athens Community Foundation?
Simply says donations. And I'm not sure what that means. Do we consider those kinds of funds donations? Or do we consider those fees? Or what is it, is there a difference in how fees are administered versus the, you know, what's really a donation other than?
Because booster would not be considered a donation. The booster club is run separate as a parent organization. When we're talking about our athletics and the booster club?
Uh huh.
When we're talking about the money that the Career Academy has within the foundation, then those are, all of those donations are collected by the Athens Community Foundation. And so we don't have a say over how they collect funds. What comes into play with our Career Academy is their request for those funds that have been donated in their name or on their behalf.
So this policy is purely for funds donated specifically to Clark County School District.
That we are receiving. And I'll defer to Mr. Greiner for any additional clarification.
Thank you, Dr. Scott. Yes, that is correct. These are any, you know, amounts received directly by Clark County School District. So this would be our school activity funds, which athletics does have a school activity fund, but there is also a separate booster club. And they, they operate as a separate 501(c)(3). So there's, there's two different, when you talk about athletics, there are two different sources. Some of that is directly, there is a booster club and then there also is a, you know, gate receipts and stuff like that is received through school activity. Goes under their school activity account for athletics.
Are we okay?
I understand what you're saying. Thank you. I still have some more questions, but this, this is not appropriate for here. We'll find it another time. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Davis.
Dr. Jaeger. Mr. Denson. Dr. Gant.
I was just wondering, Dr. Scott or maybe other board members, can you remind me? I know it mentioned that we put a request out for services and, I don't remember. Oh, yeah, three years. When did we, maybe I'm blanking on my, like, my memory. But when do we put out our requests for banking services? I just thought we, I know we, we switched, I feel like, a few years ago, right?
That is actually coming up for renewal this coming year. I believe that the timeline is February, March, that they'll have an RFP going out for banking services.
Yes, that is correct. I think the, that, yeah, we've hit that cycle where we're gonna, we're gonna do an RFP. Ms. Jackson's preparing that and will issue that probably February, late March. And then we'll have a decision by June 30th.
I have no comment, ma'am.
I do not. All right, also, we're getting a little bit of feedback in our, what are these piece, our earpieces? Is there a way to tweak that a little bit? Okay, up next is policy DJE, purchasing. Okay, so the depository of funds, I'm assuming that everyone got their concerns addressed. Okay, so we'll move that along to public comment and second read for January. DJE purchasing, and this is our final read before placing it on the agenda. So if there are additional comments.
This one actually needs to go out for public comment.
Oh, it hasn't gone out?
This is the one that it came to you all and then we were asked to revise it again to remove the language that was procedural. So it has been revised to remove the procedural language and move that to the regulation. So this still needs to go out for public comment.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. Okay, so there have been some substantial changes made to this then for the third read. Are there questions or comments?
Ms. Bagby, do you have any questions? Yes, ma'am, thank you. Ms. Davis?
No, thank you for the change.
Dr. Jaeger. Mr. Denson.
And, yeah, my only question on this one is, so have we gone ahead and altered the, the regulations at this point? I saw the recommendations there, but okay, they have them. Okay, thank you.
And you can find that, it's linked in the board update, but you'll also be able to get it in assembly.
Dr. Gant? No. I have none, ma'am.
Okay, all right, so that will go out to public comment and then will be placed on our January meeting. Next up is policy KBCA, news releases. And that is now ready to move on to the board meeting for a vote. Any comments, questions?
Ms. Bagby? Ms. Davis? Dr. Jaeger, okay. Mr. Denson? Dr. Gant? I have none, ma'am. Do you?
I do not. All right, that will move to the board meeting tonight for a vote, for consent. Ms. Palmer. Policy JGCC, infectious diseases.
Ms. Bagby? Ms. Davis? Dr. Jaeger?
I don't, I don't see a note about no changes, but I assume it's no changes from the previous version.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Denson? Dr. Gant? I have no.
Okay, all right, so that will move on to our consent agenda for this evening. Next up is DJEH, change orders.
Ms. Bagby? Ms. Davis? Dr. Jaeger? Mr. Denson? Dr. Gant?
All righty. Okay.
I think I was getting this one confused with the other one that we've removed the regulation from. Remind me with the change order, with the amount changing from 25,000 to 50,000? Did we already talk about that or am I getting it confused with? I feel like there have been like three policies related to either purchasing or the amount changing.
Yes, so we did discuss this one last month. This is change orders. So for example, through the construction that may be happening, if there's a change order, then this allows us to move forward with any change orders that are under 50,000. But anything over 50,000 would come to the board just with any purchases over 50,000.
Okay. And there, like, with it being moved up, is there like a reason? Or is it, does it feel like it just sort of slows the process down?
Definitely, when we're thinking about slowing the process for construction projects because of the cost of things, then it's easy to hit a $50,000 threshold or a $25,000 threshold. But then also to make sure that it is in alignment with all others that would come to the board for approval at that $50,000 threshold.
I have no comment, ma'am.
Okay. So to clarify, Dr. Gant, is there a concern with that threshold? Or you just wanted clarification?
Yeah, I just wanted clarification, because I feel like it was like two or three that we've sort of shifted, and I just, yeah, just wanted clarification.
Okay. So hearing no concerns, that will move up to our consent agenda for this evening. Up next, we have H. Policy DJEIA Sales Calls and Demonstrations.
Ms. Bagby? Ms. Davis?
Okay, no, I won't.
Dr. Jaeger? Okay. Mr. Denson? Dr. Gant? I have nothing, ma'am.
Okay. All right, so that will, yeah, move up to our consent agenda for this evening. Next up is JCDAF. And I think as a reminder, this is in response to recently passed legislation, so complying with, is that correct? With the electronic devices legislation from the last session? Are there any?
Ms. Bagby? Ms. Davis?
No comments.
Dr. Jaeger? Mr. Denson?
The only thing, yeah, that I'll just point out is that I think the one change that we did do that wasn't mandated is that this incorporates pre-K and not just K through, K up, I believe. Yeah, so, and I think that was a smart move, so I appreciate administration taking that, making that move.
Dr. Gant? No. I have nothing, ma'am.
Okay. I think from an informational perspective, now that we're moving into the budget planning process, this new legislation is gonna cost the district, as far as I could tell, about $257,000 to implement. So I just wanted to sort of throw that out there. There's a line item in the instructional services, I believe it is, in the spreadsheet of our budget, where every student will have to have the pouch. And in order to purchase those pouches, it's gonna cost $30 per student. So enacting this policy means that about $257,000 of our budget is built into ensuring that we are compliant.
Right. So that may or may not be the cost, because we do want to consider what are the options that our middle and high schools are using? That may be cheaper, but then also what are practices that we can put in place that don't require the purchase of the individual pouches? But they did want to research that, just to find out. And so that's included if it is determined that that would be the best route for us to take.
Okay. Thank you for that. That's super helpful. All right. Are we ready to place that on the consent agenda? All right. Next up is, oh, J Future Policies for Review from the Board. I believe that there's still outstanding conversation for two policies. The first is the Sick Leave Bank, and then the second is Interrogations and some?
FDC.
FDC. Oh, and the facilities naming, thank you. So three policies, so. Facilities naming, I think that there is an ad hoc committee that will be meeting in the next month or so to bring forward some proposed changes based on the last conversation that we had, which I think was in October. And then the interrogations policy will still need to be discussed further, hopefully, in our January meeting. And there's still some exploration happening with language and, I guess, process for the sick leave bank policies. Any other recommendations for discussion?
Ms. Bagby?
The discussion about the interrogation and investigation, can we discuss that now?
Ma'am, it's not on our agenda for this month, so we'll have to wait until it is placed on our agenda. And again, I believe that we are in line to add it, to add the new draft back to the agenda item at our January meeting.
And if you check the board update from this week, we included the draft of that, the, for the revisions for that particular policy, and are asking if there are any additional things that we need to consider that you all just add that to the board question document. And then we will finalize the revisions that we'll be prepared to present to you all in January.
All right.
Ms. Davis?
My question is on the ad hoc committee, is it the original committee? Are you assigning a number? Okay.
Oh, no, it's the original committee.
Okay, great. Thank you.
And I, at our agenda setting meeting a couple of weeks ago, Mr. Evans said that he would sort of take the charge in you guys getting back together. So I expect y'all will probably figure that out.
Probably the first of the year. Yeah, after we all see the end of the light with grading and so forth, so, yeah.
Okay. Let's see, so now we are at? Oh, oh, sorry, sorry, there's more people.
Dr. Jaeger? Mr. Denson? Dr. Gant?
There was another policy, and I can't remember where we placed it. I think it's, it's gonna come back. I just can't remember if it was January or February. We talked about it this, within the past month. And it, we passed it, but with the, related to like hires and records, like criminal records, and, okay.
So that was the one that you all passed, but asked that Mr. Schwartz and Mr. Pruitt get back together to determine if there were any additional edits that were needed to that policy. And so that is one that is slated for January as well.
Thank you.
So we've got four, four part, okay, I need to put that in my, in my memory bank. Not my sick bank. Oh, that's not for January. Okay, so the sick leave bank, I think, may be later.
It will be later, because one of the next steps was to begin to educate our staff around the parameters of a sick leave bank and to get a very soft pole around an interest in that.
Okay. So we're all clear about January's policies that will come back to us, and then the sick leave bank, we're still, they're still in the exploratory phases. No, okay. Okay. So now we are ready to move on to our business items for consent agenda discussion. The first is an update on the charter system and intent to apply for 2026. I believe we have a presentation.
Yes, so I'll ask Mr. Barlamet and Mr. Nobles, and they will come forth and provide you all with that presentation.
Thank you very much. There we go. Good evening, board members. Dr. Scott, my name is James Barlamet. I'm the Executive Director of Innovation Strategy and Governance. And with me here tonight is Mr. Nobles, our Governance and Flexibility Specialist. Together, Mr. Nobles and I work with the charter system here in Clark County. Gotcha, I have to turn it on. So tonight, we are here to discuss a couple of things. First is an update on the charter system implementation across CCSD. The second, which is a resolution on the board agenda, which is consideration for approval of a charter system renewal application, which would be then submitted in late 2026.
I'm sorry, is this PowerPoint available?
It's at the very bottom. It's linked at the very bottom of that agenda item. It kind of looks like a footnote.
Good, okay. If you recall, CCSD has been a charter system since 2016. The initial five-year contract ran for six years, actually, because we got an extension from the state for one year due to educational interruptions due to the COVID-19 pandemic. And then we renewed our contract in 2022, and that is our current agreement with the state board. And that contract is now due to expire in June of 2027. The resolution on the agenda tonight is to confirm the board's interest in renewing the charter contract. Based on past experience, we need about a year of lead time to build an application, which would then be due, like I said, in late 2026. And we will go into more detail about the timeline towards the end of this presentation.
So we're excited to share some current highlights of our charter system that showcase the strength of our schools and leadership teams. Of the 48 charter systems that exist in the state, CCSD is the fifth-largest charter system outside of the metro Atlanta area. And we're proud that 100% of our schools have local school governance teams, representing over 200 active members. Each school has an approved school improvement plan that all aligns with the board-approved strategic plan. Each year, CCSD elects to allocate more than $600,000 to our LSG teams to accelerate innovation and strengthen student outcomes. Some of the highlights of these, some of the highlights of these include Leader and Me and the TED Ed Student Talks program that focuses on building our students' leadership capacity. In recognition of this work, CCSD was named, was named the winner of the 2025 Georgia Charter System Leadership Award in last month's Charter System Conference, reflecting our dedication to making a positive impact and building the leadership capacity of our students.
So those were some highlights of the charter system, some highlights of our CCSD schools as a whole. Under our current charter system contract, CCSD schools have achieved significant gains that reflect the strength of the charter system model. Enrollment at the Athens Community Career Academy, which is an essential feature of our charter system contract, has doubled with exciting career pathways and industry certifications. High school graduation rates are up five points. Dual enrollment and advanced placement rates are both up 10 points. Both traditional high schools have won multiple AP distinction awards for achievement and equitable access to AP content. All 21 schools are recognized for positive behavioral intervention supports or PBIS implementation, with five achieving distinguished status. 11 out of 21 schools achieved four or five-star climate ratings. These outcomes are not coincidental. They are the result of a system that is aligned through our connected priorities and shared governance, optimized using flexibility responsibly and charter system money fairly and innovatively, and thriving through progress monitoring and a culture of continuous improvement that is embedded throughout our school district.
So now we're going to the essential innovative features of our current charter system contract. Our current charter system contract includes seven essential and innovative features. Each year, we are asked to report out on the implementation status of these features. The 2025 report is included in the board agenda. These seven features are aligned with our board-approved strategic plan and are aligned with our core mission to create educational journeys that empower all students to fulfill their potential. The Flex Forward Program allows us to research and explore flexibility options to ensure their alignment with board policy and district strategic plan. Thrive by Five is focused on the birth-to-five programs, connecting with hospitals and pediatricians to support new and expecting mothers with literacy resources. The Positive Behavior Interventions and Support, or PBIS, programs has improved school climate star ratings, integrating the Leader and Me program throughout our district. The Career Academy's expansion and success relies on its growth connections with Athens Technical College and response to local industry needs. And with Career Explorations, has expanded to include K5 and is growing through the Athens Achieve Initiative and the World of Wonders program, World of Works programs. Whole Child Strategies are bolstered by school-based health centers that support socio-emotional supports, communications, and family engagement.
CCSD applies its blanket waiver district flexibility responsibly, only using waivers that meet the needs of our schools, teachers, and students. These waivers also need to be aligned to our essential and innovative features. This slide includes just a few of our charter waiver usage, which are all tied to driving student performance. Annually, the district uses waivers such as school calendar, teacher certification practices, and promotion and retention. These waivers provide greater freedom in professional development for teachers, hiring practices, and how we award credit for promotion and retention. At the local school level, choice is given to schools on the best models to serve students who are behind academically, which includes the early intervention programs and remedial education programs, as well as class-sized flexibility and how credits are earned by students for internships and apprenticeships.
So with the innovation funds, CCSD empowers LSG teams to apply for and use innovation funds to address challenges and needs within their schools and communities. Each year, CCSD chooses to allot over $600,000 to schools through an application process. We allot a $20,000 base funding for, with additional funding allocated based on enrollment size, poverty level, and academic status. All innovation fund applications must be aligned to the school's improvement plans and objectives, which are aligned with the district strategic plans. During this charter system contract, funds have been used for all three strategic plan areas of thriving students, connecting cultures, and optimized talent. Some examples include book vending machines, summer literacy campaigns, reading initiatives, media center resources, and tutoring programs, outdoor classrooms, STEM extensions and equipments, counseling and mentoring support, including Girls with Pearls, Superman of Stroud, and Sisterhood Serenity Circles. After-school clubs like chess, theater, chorus, drumline, and strings programs. In addition, using our district innovation funds, we've renovated and outfitted two school buses to be innovative learning labs, created opportunities to participate in TED Ed for students, and help to bolster and promote our school health centers.
So one of the things that we're most excited about is the partnerships that we've been able to build as a district and as our individual schools have established these over the course of our charter system contract. Something Mr. Nobles and I try to express to our LSG teams in our biannual training, which we call LSGT University, is that innovations don't have to be wildly inventive ideas. You don't have to reinvent the wheel. Some of our most impactful programs have been small ideas with a big impact. A great example is the work being done through our successful partnership with the Get Comfortable program and Books for Keeps at Howard B. Stroud Elementary and Fowler Drive Elementary. Mentoring students is not in itself an innovative idea, but pairing students with a highly-trained volunteer for literacy support through, let's face it, a non-traditional partnership with a brewery, that is innovation. That's Athens at its best. Two programs, the Leader and Me and TED Ed Student Talks programs, take effective ideas created for adults and ask the question, wouldn't this be good for kids, too? Leader and Me is a game changer for school culture, and it uses the Franklin Covey's Seven Habits of Highly Effective People, something that's been around for years. The TED Ed Student Talks program builds student voice, confidence, leadership, and literacy skills by tasking them to make a TED Talk.
And just to touch on that, this year, CCSD will be hosting our very first TEDx event in May, May 3rd, and we definitely would invite all of you to attend. We're really proud to highlight the great work happening across our LSG teams. First, our first charter system, I apologize. Our first charter system contract, CCSD has truly learned, leaned into the ideal of building not only strong and engaged LSG teams, but also building the leadership capacity of all of our LSG team members. We believe we bring people together to collaborate and feel empowered to lead at the local level. Our training for the members focused on their roles in the school improvement process, which focused them back to their school's improvement plan. improvement process, which focused them back to their school's improvement plan. Based on the results of our annual LSG team evaluation survey, ninety percent of our members said that they use the school improvement plan to guide its actions, and eighty-six percent said that they regularly monitor the school's progress toward strategic outcomes. Focusing on school improvement plans, the tracking outcomes allows co-chairs to set clear meeting agendas, lead effective meetings, maintain focus, and encourage all members to actively participate in all discussions. In addition to our biannually LSGT university training, we've launched a partnership with the UGA's J.W. Fannin Institute, the leadership development, the School Governance Team Academy, Leadership Academy. This academy focuses on building leadership skills for our community co-chair members. We are engaged currently in building an asynchronous training module for all members and more opportunities for our LSG teams to collaborate, to share their ideas and best practices. We've also worked closely with leaders from other districts and all CCSD divisions to connect LSG teams with strategic planning and other points of input into the CCSD processes. We've worked closely with our Human Resources Division to ensure all LSG teams have a voice in the principal hiring process. We work with our Business Services Division to create new guidelines for the innovation funds to assure fiscal accountability and to maximize the opportunities with those funds.
So, what will the next charter system application look like, should the board approve us to go forward? First of all, it needs to be aligned with our current data. What are the emerging needs and challenges for our students? Our most recent large-scale data reviews were for our mid-cycle Cognia accreditation report and our 2025 Charter System Annual Report. From these analyses, we identified, number one, literacy performance in CCSD, contributing to support our students towards not just reading at grade level, but becoming proficient readers who have mastered English language arts. STEM education, particularly supporting students at key transition points from fifth to sixth grade and from eighth to ninth grades. Teacher retention, continuing to partner with our HR department to build a culture where outstanding teaching is recognized, teachers are given useful and timely feedback, and providing opportunities for mentor-teacher relationships. Student safety, we must continue to make all spaces in our buildings safe and positive places for students while continuing to focus on behavior support and training. Parent engagement, we need to leverage our LSG teams to strengthen our engagement with parents and caregivers while continuing to strengthen our communication networks. Equitable access, achievement for student groups, specifically students with disabilities and African-American students remains low, and we must continue to build high expectations for all students. Finally, increasing enrollment. Public schools across Georgia and the country are constantly under scrutiny, and many, like CCSD, are losing enrollment every year. Accomplishing all of the above will help increase our enrollment, but the question must remain in our minds. How can we better leverage and promote our status as a charter system to better serve our students and our community?
Now that we've looked at the progress that we've made as a charter system, I want to walk you through the renewal timeline from the Georgia Department of Education, should our board agree to move forward with a renewal application. We are currently in the planning phase, connecting with the DOE to understand the schedule, reaching out to districts who have recently completed their renewal process, and building a detailed project plan to guide our work this year. Through the spring and summer of 2026, our focus will be on reflection and data collection. We will gather evidence around our essential and innovative features, analyze academic growth, review governance team performance, and examine stakeholder surveys. Once we submit the application in November of 2026, we'll enter the presentation phase of renewal, which includes a group interview with a formal presentation to the DOE. From March through June of 2027, we'll respond to any fiscal clarification or questions from the state to prepare for the Charter Advisory Committee's decision. We anticipate receiving approval in time for the launch of our new charter system contract in July of 2027, and our immediate next step will be the signing of our local board resolution, which must be submitted for the renewal application. So, thank you for letting us get, thank you for letting us share an update of our charter system. We're incredibly proud that we've accomplished together and deeply appreciative of the ongoing support of our shared governance model from CCSD leadership. And with that, we're happy to answer any questions that you guys may have. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Barlamet and Mr. Nobles. Are we ready for questions or thoughts?
Ms. Bagby? Ms. Davis?
Yes, I do have questions. Thank you so much for the explanation, and I did get a chance to read this earlier. And coming straight from GSBA, right, just last week, right, I kept hearing over and over again about the students, about the students, about the students, that everything should be about the students. And I didn't hear a lot in this presentation in terms of how this model has really worked to serve our students. I heard a couple of things in there about the Leader and Me. I don't know if that goes across the board to all students, but I did hear specifically the concerns that you had about our lower-performing students. And so, I'm anxious to learn how the charter system has truly given us the flexibility to be innovative with those children that are underperforming, as they have been forever, right, since I've been on the board. And let me just be real clear, they might have done phenomenal before I was here, but since 2012, that same group of children seem to be consistently underperforming. I'm anxious to see some gains in that or some innovation around that, or something that gives me hope that all of the investment in preparing the leadership is actually going to give us a return, because this is our tenth year, sixteen, this is our tenth year in this. And so, I'm looking for something different. I don't know how to phrase that. I don't know how we have a conversation about that to get me to better understand what I'm reading or what I'm hearing, but I'm just not feeling that this is enough for me to understand how this benefits us. Thank you.
Well, I think one specific way, if I go back to the charter system waivers that we use on an annual basis, one of those waivers is for flexibility models for our early intervention programs and our remedial education programs. That's the one that I can point to that has the most direct impact on students who are struggling academically. So, those are EIP programs and REP programs. And what the schools have at their hands, at their fingertips, is the ability to use what they call innovative models to serve students. So, that allows them to change up the way that class size works when students are actually served in those models. So, you could have push-in from EIP teachers who come in, or REP support people who come into the classroom. You could have students who are broken into small groups. You could have situations where you have small groups and individual work going on in the same classroom. This model actually allows us to maintain the same level of funding that we would get through a traditional EIP or REP model, but we have the flexibility to make those models look like whatever we want them to look like, whatever is going to best serve our kids. So, that's one example. I think there are a number of highlights that really do serve all of our students out of our essential and innovative features. The first that I could point to is the PBIS program, which has greatly impacted students. We've now folded the Leader and Me program into PBIS that started at Barnett Shoals back probably three or four years ago. That was, that was an LSG team innovation at the beginning. We gave a grant, a very small grant, to start that program at Barnett Shoals. That then grew into something that spread to three schools at that point, which were also funded through LSGT funds. That is now funded at the district level. All schools, including middle and high schools, have the Leader and Me program embedded within them, and they're at different stages of implementation, but that's something that has a very positive impact on the culture of all of our schools and all of our students. The career, you know, we talk about educate, building educational journeys for students. What we've tried to do, this charter system contract, is be intentional about making sure we're not just spreading career learning to just high school students, and especially those students at the Career Academy, but expanding that to include students in K through eight. And that's been an intentional focus of Stephen and I, and also through Dr. Ramirez, who's our CTAE director. We are trying to build more opportunities, especially for students in K through five, to learn about careers, be able to get their hands on in some careers. Some great examples of that have been computer science. Some of these are courses, some are programs at schools, and also ag science at the elementary level as well. So, those opportunities are some of the ones that I can point to that have an impact on all of our students. I could probably go, I don't know if you want to add anything.
I think that's pretty much it. That's a great list to touch on.
Okay. Are there other members you'd like to ask?
Dr. Yeager?
Yes, excuse me. Thank you. That was really exciting. Congratulations on getting a hundred percent of the schools having fully functional LSTTs. I know that's been a challenge and was one of the issues we had a few years ago when we were talking about renewals. So, thank you for that, and that's really, really great news. I'm excited to hear about your, the literacy program and expanding that, if you want to elaborate a little bit more on that. And then also, I was really excited to see the STEM listed on the things we might do more of next. So, I'd love you to elaborate on those two points, please.
So, been talking about this a lot, especially today even. The literacy program is huge. I mean, that is, so, we're in a year, I'm sure that you all know, right now, we're in a year where the ELA standards are changing for every student in the school district. Those Georgia standards that have been pushed down are very different from what the students used to see. We believe as we look at the, you know, the testing blueprints, analyzing those new standards compared to the old standards, they are much more rigorous as well. We're also going to have a new Georgia Milestones test that's going to test students on those standards as well. So, we have been working tirelessly, I feel, and Dr. Elder can speak to this as well, to make shifts, to make sure that our high-quality instructional materials, our HQIMs, are aligned to the new standards, to make sure that we are both teaching at the rigor of those standards and assessing students at the rigor of those standards as well. That's something that we talked about today. We have to make sure that the way that we're assessing students in classrooms, whether that be formative assessments, tickets out the door, quizzes, quick checks, they have to be aligned to the new rigor of the standards and the new rigor of the Georgia Milestones test. That doesn't really speak a lot about how the charter system can help us innovate in that space. To me, the most innovative thing that we have done as far as literacy is concerned is probably the Get Comfortable Books for Keeps program, which is focused on mentoring for kids. That's literacy mentoring for kids. That's part of our conversation, is how do we continue those programs that have been working for those students who have been, you know, in those mentoring situations? How do we expand those programs? I think that's, that's, these areas are ones that we need to explore more on how we use flexibility. The same would be true for our STEM education as well. We've done a lot with purchasing equipment, with innovative things like the, I mean, the innovative learning labs really are focused on STEM education. That can be used for basically anything, but we believe those should be best used as STEM incubators, basically. But one thing that we know is that when our students, even the students who graduate from our high schools and go to college, many of those students need to take remedial courses in math. We know that from our longitudinal state data. It's twice the rate of students who need remedial courses in literacy. So, that says something about how we're preparing our, even our graduates who are going to college are needing remediation, and that rate is much higher than the state average as well. So, you know, I don't know if we have anything really definitive at this point. This is something, those are all areas we need to explore, basically, to try to include in our new application. Think of new innovative and flexible ways that we can support those programs.
Mr. Jensen?
Thank you. Thanks for this presentation. Really appreciate it. And the only question I had is, and it might just be a typo, but if it's not, I just wanted clarification, on the 2025 annual report, I really appreciated the breakdown of like the current waivers that we have in place and the application that we have for them. And there's eleven listed there, but in the conclusion, it references twelve waivers. So, I wasn't sure if that twelve was incorrect, or if there was just one left off the list.
That's a great question. There may be one that was left off of the report, but I can, I can definitely investigate that.
Yeah, and I don't expect that here tonight, but yeah, if you could send that over, if that is correct, I'd appreciate it. Yeah, thank you.
Dr. Kent?
Yes, I want, thank you for the overview. I wanted to inquire about how we are assessing the effectiveness. So, like, when we, I know before it's been shared with us, like, the, like, the funding for the LSTTs, which is great. And my understanding, if my memory is serving me correctly, when we started the charter system, it was really to target the deficits, like, with the students that were at risk. And so, I'm wondering, how are we, one, how do we know what we're doing is impacting our problem areas? And then, two, how do we, I know that, I think there used to be a process, like, with the LSTTs and where, you know, the innovation that they're going to do. How are we assuring that it is tied back to the problem area? And it's not, I mean, enrichment is good, and I know, you know, sort of serving the whole student and all of our students, but how do we, how are we assessing that?
Yeah, we can assure that it's tied to the problem area of the schools because it's attached to the schools' strategic plans. So, from our perspective, they're not coming up with innovative ideas. They're creating innovative solutions. So, when they submit an application about things they want to pursue, one of the things that we consider before approving their application is, how does this align with their school's strategic plan, and how does that pour into the district's strategic plan? That's how we assure that it's covering the gaps and the needs of each school and the students. Do you think of anything else?
Well, the other thing that I thought about was, you're right, there are, in the contract, there are specific accountability measures that are included in every charter system contract. And those are mostly tied to overall CCRPI scores.
Okay.
And what they call, in the past contract, they've called it beating the odds, which, if y'all are familiar with that concept, it's basically, are you beating the odds based on your poverty level, your level of students with disabilities, your level of English learners, your mobility rates, and your race and ethnicity makeup of the district? They, it's a, you know, it's a standard regression model that they use to come up with a score where you should be, and then comparing where you are academically based on the CCRPI score, whether you beat that score. So, you're beating the odds or not beating the odds, basically. Those are the main accountability measures that are included in our charter system contract. Honestly, when I look at our strategic plan, when I look at our performance measures, and you look at the progression and the targets that we've set for ourselves, our internal accountability system, those expectations are much more rigorous than what the state expects of our schools, because there are some really rigorous targets included in that, in those measures. And right now, I'm sure you all have reviewed that. I know that Dr. Elder gave a presentation on those measures. We are not meeting a number of those measures, and we need to do better, especially in the areas and we need to do better, especially in the areas like you and Ms. Davis are speaking about, serving our students who are struggling academically, who are at risk, namely our students with disabilities and our African-American students.
Yeah, I'm just, and I know it's nothing that we can really hash out, but just as we, you know, move forward over the next year and if the board approves, just wondering like, you know, as we have these like actions and programs or solutions, you know, it seems that it could be helpful for us to continue thinking about, how do we know what we're doing is impacting that? Not, I mean, so from the CCRPI, but then also like if we see progress. So you mentioned like books for keeps. Like how do we narrow down that, like examining that so that then we know that this is either, you know, related to this or it, we believe that it's actually directly affecting it? And then if it is, like, how do we then like replicate it and like, you know, spread it or maybe even link it closer to those accountability measures?
I totally agree. And actually, when you talk about the Get Comfortable program, the literacy mentors, excuse me, that's one program where we are doing a good job of, of measuring the progress of students and whether that's having an impact. And it's caused me, especially just personally, to reflect on exactly what you're talking about is how well, if we measured and, and analyzed all of our individual programs as closely as we've been analyzing and measuring that program, first of all, how would that look? And also, how many of the programs that we have that would we, what would we reveal underneath there? I think specific, not to get too deep in the weeds, but I, I do think specifically about our MTSS program, our multiple, our multi-tiered system of support. I think a lot about that program. Because the Books for Keeps program, if you take that as sort of an example of a good MTSS program, right, how do we build more programs like that? How do we build more interventions like that?
Okay, did everyone have an opportunity?
Hey, guys. So what happens if we decide not to do this?
Very good question. So the, the three options that were available as part of the, the law that was passed in 2008, districts were required in 2014 to make a decision about whether we wanted to be, A, a charter system, B, a strategic waiver school system, or C, a traditional Title 20 no waivers school system. So those would, they're still the, the three choices, that when this contract runs out, those would still be the choices. The strategic waiver school system, which is one of the other options, that is still a performance contract with the state, with the Georgia DOE. In that case, the Governor's Office of Student Achievement has oversight over all of the SWSS systems in the state. So they report out on, they monitor all of the strategic waiver systems. They report to the DOE on how they're doing. They have the ability to, you know, sanction school districts who are not performing at the level that they expect. So that's one thing to consider. It's not just solely Georgia DOE. You involve the Governor's Office with the strategic waiver systems. And then the traditional Title 20 no waiver systems, of which there are only two in the state, by the way, those are systems that have no waivers at all. They're not under any kind of contract, but they don't receive any waivers either. They have to play by all of the rules in the Title 20 book. I should also mention the strategic waiver systems. One of the other differences is while the charter system has blanket waiver status, strategic waiver system, we would have to then choose the waivers that we want to take and then put those in that performance contract with the state as well. Yes. One other difference would be that as a charter system, we do receive supplemental funding from the state. Strategic waivers and no waiver systems do not receive any additional funding from the state.
All right. I believe that everyone's had their questions answered to some extent. Are we, because this item now needs to be, we need to decide if we're going to place it on the consent agenda or separate it and have further discussion at the board meeting prior to our vote. So I'd like to get a temperature on where everyone is in, in either regard.
Not on consent.
Okay, so there's, all we need is one person to say not on consent. So we will remove this item from the consent agenda and place it as a separate item for vote. And I would like to thank you both for your presentations, but also your illuminating responses to these questions. I feel like you were very, very targeted and knowledgeable in your response and very candid and honest, and that's really appreciated, where you can point out where the deficiencies are, where our weaknesses are, and, and just lay it out for the public and for the board to be aware. So thank you for that. All right, so, yeah. We are now ready to move on to item B, and that is the November 13th work session and board meeting minutes. Consent?
Consent.
Okay. Purchase of 11 new Bluebird school buses for 26, 27 school year. If anybody wants it polled, just say loud, poll. Okay? That will be polled, item C, the purchase of the buses. And at this point, if that's going to be polled, we can talk about it now, if, if that would help with our meeting, our, our board meeting? Okay.
Ms. Bagby? Ms. Davis?
I do want to say that I'm excited about having this discussion and I'm, I really want to talk more about these buses. I want us to look at those, but one of the things I did at GSBA is I did talk to some alternative transportation people and I'd love to share that with you in my trip report, which I will. And I will simply just say that there's some opportunities here. Thank you.
Dr. Jaeger?
Yeah, I didn't see how this is consistent with our sustainability planning. We discussed a lot about how these propane buses generate way more particulate pollution than even regular old diesel buses. And why are we buying 10 years' worth of polluting buses? I, I understand that we have a need for particularly wheelchair buses. Is this the only option that we have for those wheelchair buses?
So in consideration of that, then we definitely had conversations around the choices in the buses that would be included within this purchase. And I know that Mr. Gurley and Mr. Swift have worked in collaboration with our new sustainability coordinator, Mr. Priest, to discuss this particular purchase. And so I am going to ask if he would come and just kind of share his findings and recommendations as he's worked with them on this.
Good evening. So as far as the buses are concerned, a lot of them, I think it was Dr. Jaeger that had the question about if these are the only options for wheelchair buses. We have found pretty much yes. There are wheelchair buses out there that are EV, but they don't meet the standards that the shop has for our buses. So a majority of those are wheelchair buses. There are two buses on there that are not wheelchair buses. The concern with making those buses EV is the infrastructure. We don't currently have the infrastructure to accommodate more electric buses over at Transportation. So as far as steps to take towards electrification, it'd be kind of two things. The first would be, take a look at our infrastructure and see what it needs to increase the capacity for electric buses. And the second is, take the opportunity with our two current electric buses, gather the data for a year and really dive in and take a look and see at their, their performance, right? So as far as, two big points, one, our infrastructure can't really handle more electric buses. We should move forward. And the, the conversation's kind of already started as far as how do we increase capacity to get more chargers for more electric buses? And the second is, take the time to look at our current electric buses to see where we can go in the future.
Mr. Jensen?
Yeah, I mean, my questions are definitely in line with Dr. Jaeger's there. And I guess my other concern would be that, you know, what, what is the expected lifespan of these buses that we'd be purchasing? How long would be expecting to be using them?
Twelve-year cycle.
Twelve years. Yeah, it's just that also that we're therefore really committing ourselves to having to use, you know, propane infrastructure for another 12 years now, which definitely does not, you know, fit within the sustainability plan, our recommendations. So it's, I, I guess, in some ways, I'd almost possibly like to be able to go towards, you know, more general gasoline fuel or the diesel fuel than moving towards the propane, which is really going to lock us in with having to use that. It's probably going to block us from having the transition to electric because we're going to be locked in with those things for 12 years, that infrastructure. So that's my other concern.
And I, I know less about what we currently have, you know, I'm fairly new. So as far as like what we have and what we'd be locked into, that's a conversation that I'd have to explore more as well myself.
Dr. Gant?
I was wondering, well, I had a different question, but now that you've spoken about infrastructure, and I know you mentioned that you all are having those conversations, what are some of the preliminary things that you all have talked about, particularly as we're starting to think about like budgeting and things like that? What is needed by way of infrastructure? That would be my first question. And I know we're like, you know, continuing to gather information like on our electric buses that we have, wondering if there's like wiggle room here to be able to purchase some aspect of this, but then also purchase another electric bus as well? Because it's sort of the thing, it's just sort of seems like it might take a while to build infrastructure and it probably is not realistic that, you know, all of a sudden the district, you know, five years from now is just going to say, I'm going to purchase a whole lot of electric buses like at one time. And so I'm just wondering, how can we like slowly start to move towards that goal if we know that that is, those were some of the recommendations? How do we move towards that goal, but then how do we also build infrastructure?
Yeah. So one of the things, I know Georgia Power at some point in the process of getting these electric buses that we had or have now, put in a new transformer to accommodate the electric chargers for those buses. That, the chargers that we have now is all that the infrastructure now can accommodate. So we'd have to either increase the transformer size, which we can do, and it will accommodate a couple more chargers, but then we run into the same problem the next time we have this conversation of, well, now we can only handle four chargers with our current infrastructure. We need to increase more. So as far as what I think we should be doing is starting a conversation with Georgia Power to like redo all of the power on Paradise Boulevard so that if we are moving our, you know, plant services vehicles to electric as well, and we're getting, you know, buses and transportation vehicles over on that side of things that are electric, we can do the work once and have more electric vehicles in the future. So as far as what we need, that is a question that we asked, and we don't really have an answer yet as far as what it'll take. I know there are a lot of programs, well, less these days, to kind of help us with improving that infrastructure. I'd have to look into what is available for that infrastructure. And there was a second question there that I had something about.
Yes. Wondering, can we add another bus? Like how do we slowly, when we make these purchases, how do we add to our inventory without it all of us, you know, having to come like at once?
Yeah. I mean, if, if we bought an electric bus today, we would not be able to charge it. So as far as like, what are the, the next steps? Again, I think the, the next step that makes the most sense to me is let's increase our capacity first, so that when we come across these decisions in the future, we can easily say, oh, we've done the work of looking at the buses we have for a year. They are efficient. They do work well for our use case. And then we can move forward with that bus purchase instead of this conversation of, well, we maybe can buy a bus and we don't currently have the infrastructure for it. Let's go find the infrastructure for it. So as far as like steps to get to a point where we can buy more electric vehicles, again, I think figuring out where we can make improvements to our structure should be step one. And then when we get to this conversation again in the future, we can make better decisions.
I have nothing, ma'am.
I'd just like to say that before the district comes to us for $2 million more in non-electric buses, I would like to see that planned before I vote for $2 more million on old technology.
I, I have just a couple of questions. So, so you did mention that the wheelchair accessible buses really don't have options that fit our current regulations. Okay, fully understood. For the two additional buses, you're saying that we do not currently have the infrastructure. My question, I think, to perhaps you, but just the district in general, is that we had this discussion a year ago, a year and a half ago. We formed a committee to continue this work. The committee decided to hire a sustainability coordinator. We thought that we would be able to resolve these issues. And then the next time that a bus conversation is brought to the board, the infrastructure conversation has or is happening in tandem. And that's not happening right now. And so we are, when, I'll be very honest with you. When we had the agenda setting meeting, I said, this conversation is going to go off the rails because we keep having, we keep being forced as a board to make emergency decisions without the district meeting us halfway as a board on what the requests have been to move forward with making informed decisions in the future. So what I would ask, as Dr. Jaeger just did, is to not surprise us every time a conversation about purchasing buses comes before us and say, well, we haven't talked about infrastructure. Why? Why haven't we talked about infrastructure? We hired a sustainability coordinator. So that's just my two cents. Can we please stop doing this?
And it's the conversation I'm, I'm having now of, you know, I just got here. So as far as like my knowledge on the infrastructure, I got in here and said, you know, we need better infrastructure. That's, that's the only thing that I have been able to do.
Okay. That's definitely concerning.
To that point, I think that we also have to remember that last year, when the vote was made, then it was to eliminate several of the buses that were proposed in order to have the funds to cover the electric buses, which then meant that several of the special ed buses that were slated to be replaced could not be replaced. And so this is being brought to, because they did have to pull some retired buses out of retirement in order to have the wheelchair buses that we needed. And so with that in mind, then I don't know that there was intentionality around, let's bring it without considering the EV options, but it was, this is what we now know regarding the EV options when it comes to the wheelchair accessible buses, but then also when it comes to the infrastructure. And so part of it is what they knew at the time versus what we know now. And I think having the sustainability coordinator in place is helping us understand what actually would be needed for an infrastructure that would have us prepared to increase our actual fleet of buses that are EV. I also know that we discussed that we would want to gather that data to kind of know the impact of it, so that we would be able to build out a true plan for a transition that would make sense based upon the technology that was available and also based upon the funding that we had available. And so I think that that's one of the things that Mr. Priest is really working towards is gathering that information around.
is gathering that information around the cycle with which they're looking to replace buses in conjunction with how do we build our infrastructure so that as we are building out this cycle, that we're looking at what would be the most feasible and the most realistic when it comes to moving more towards a sustainable model. And so I think that's why we lean more towards, we know that we can afford the plant services vehicles that are EV, we know that the technology on that lets us know that those are vehicles that we can actually have the infrastructure to charge and be able to use as we are learning more around the larger, heavier multi-passenger vehicles. And so it's not that they're not moving towards it as much as they are, they're kind of learning as well right now.
Understood. Were it not for the fact that we're beholden to these buses for 10 to 12 years, I think we would be a lot more lenient as a board to say, oh, it's okay while the exploration is happening. But every time we vote to pass these things, we're now dedicating ourselves to these buses until 2035, 2037. Okay. Are there other?
Madam Chair, could I just say one thing?
Yeah, sure.
Mr. Priest, welcome.
Thank you.
And as you can see, you're very important.
I appreciate it.
Okay, because this is, this is an issue that we care deeply about.
As do I.
And we, we hired you for a reason, and so we need, we need your guidance on this. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We are now at item D. Thank you so much. Thank you so much, Mr. Priest. Yeah, we're pulling that from consent. Dr. Gant, did you have something? Okay.
I was just, could you clarify, either Dr. Scott or Mr. Gurley or Mr. Swift? How often does the rotation come about, like, as we are like replacing inventory? So for instance, should this pass, when can we anticipate like the next round of like needing to update or purchase?
I'll take this one. Normally what we try to do, and this is the shop recommendation, is that every year we come forward with a purchase that we can generally afford. So a lot of times we'll look at what kind of money we're getting from the state, what kind of splosh money. So normally, it's run in the past between eight to 12. I think 12 is the most we've ever purchased. But the plan is to try to replace the buses every 12 years and come every year with either eight to 12. And depending on the mix, depends on the age of the fleet that we're going to take out. So for example, the reason we bought the wheelchairs forward was because we noticed that next year we're going to have about 20 of them that are going to be 10 years. And so I said, look, we can't get a bunch of buses at one time, you don't like to do that in one particular type. So what we had to do was we were going to bring these forward and next year probably have another large wheelchair purchase to get those 20 phased out because we had to pull a couple out of the boneyard and get them back running for wheelchair buses because they needed them.
Okay. That's helpful. I'm just sort of thinking through like what the district needs, which is, it sounds like, Dr. Scott, it sounds like y'all are in the process of discussing infrastructure, which is, I think, was mentioned as like step one. And then like, how do we basically line that timeline up? And, you know, like when we can expect like new, a new request, and then we can sort of back up that step one with, you know, okay, well, by this date, we know that we would have had conversations and understand a little bit more about how we build our capacity and things like that. So it sounds like it's every year, Mr. Gurley, right?
Yes. And just to add to some of the conversation from sustainability, we would need to determine, you know, how many buses we're going to get in the future, whether we're going to have buses and automobiles over at Paradise Charging, because we may want dual-use chargers. And then we want to know how much we're going to need to feed into the area. So we've talked a little bit about that, because we might need a different location if we're going to mix buses and cars, or how we're going to do that. In the car part, we don't purchase cars unless it's for us. Each individual department does that. So if they wanted to get an electric vehicle, then they would purchase that, and then where are you going to charge it? I do know that when we looked at where we could charge the buses, we found that there was the ability to put in chargers at some of our locations, but all of our locations don't have the power coming in to do it. But they probably do for cars, that's just a guess. I'd have to talk to Georgia Power, we'd have to talk to Georgia Power.
Okay. So that item has been pulled. And in the interest of time for the next sets of items, let's save the discussion on each item if it is pulled for our regular board meeting, so we have a little bit of a break between now and the board meeting. So we are now at item D, the quitclaim deed. Consent?
Consent.
Okay.
Can we pull that?
Okay. Item has been pulled, Ms. Palmer. Next up is item E, Cisco collaboration purchase. Consent? Item F, internet access purchase. Consent? G, wireless upgrade purchase. Okay, consent. H?
Yeah, I want to pull it, but I have, it's a quick question, but we can wait until the real meeting, but if we could pull it, that would be great.
If it's quick, do you want to just go ahead?
Well, I think it's quick. Dr. Scott, I think it is. You know, but basically, it's like the three of those items. I'm just wondering how, I think with some of them I read, like, they were like multi-year contracts, and just trying to figure out how it aligns with our disparity study. Like, do we feel, do we feel like it's compatible with that, or might there need to be things we're thinking about, even if we approve these, like how we can sort of, how we can evaluate these based on some of the recommendations from the disparity study? I know inside of the explanation, a lot of them were based on, the decisions were based on price, and I think like locality, and it mentioned like four, three or four other things. But just trying to figure out like how we, how we prioritize that and approve these.
So in reference to the ones that are the multi-year?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And so, Mr. Duke, I'll let you confirm if the multi-year ones, is it a multi-year with an annual renewal where we have the option to seek other services?
That's exactly what it is. It's a single-year contract that will automatically renew for up to four additional years unless we choose to opt out.
And when it renews automatically, does it come back to us?
No.
No, I don't think these do come back to you for the, for the automatic renewal. But with that, then if the assessment shows, or if our service that we're getting from them shows that we do need to look at other options, then we do have the option to do that.
Do you want to continue to pull it?
Yeah.
So that item is pulled. That was G. Now we are at H, the gains data cabling purchase. All right, consent. And then the 26th board meeting calendar. Consent. Okay. So we've pulled two, three, three items have been pulled, and then the rest are on consent. Oh, feel, oh my gosh, our favorite one, field trips. Okay, consent. Okay, so we're good. Ms. Palmer, do you mind reading back to us what we have pulled, so I understand?
A, charter system intent to apply. C, purchase buses. D, quitclaim deed. G, wireless upgrade.
Okay. All right, thank you so much. Okay, now we are at personnel. Do we need to have an executive session, Dr. Scott? Okay. All right. So now we are at adjournment, item eight. And we'll see you all in about 25 minutes for our regular board meeting. Thank you.
All right, this is our December regular board meeting. And I believe we are ready to call the meeting to order. And let's go ahead and start with roll call. Superintendent Scott?
Yes, Madam President. Heidi Hensley. Mary P. Bagby.
Here.
Lynda Davis.
Here.
Dr. Patricia Jaeger.
Here.
Tim Denson.
Here.
Dr. Lumbie Anderson.
Here.
Dr. Lakeisha Gant.
Here.
Nicole Hall.
Mark Evans.
Here.
Okay, it looks like we have a quorum and we can continue with our agenda as presented. Our next item is three, the silent meditation and pledge of allegiance. We'll start with our moment of silence and then move on to the pledge of allegiance. And the flag is to the front of the room to your left. Okay, now we will please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And up next, we have our December awards and recognitions. Dr. Scott, Dr., sorry, Dr. Moore.
Thank you very much, Dr. Anderson. Good evening, Dr. Scott, and board members. We have a few recognitions tonight, as you can tell as you look out at our crowd. So we're going to go ahead and get started. First, let's see, did Omnia Mansour, did Omnia make it in? Great. First, we'd like to recognize one of our thriving high school students who recently excelled on the national stage. If at this time I could have Cedar Shoals High School senior Omnia Mansour come to the stage and just stand right in the middle while we tell everybody about the great things you've done. Omnia recently traveled to Indianapolis late October with several of her fellow Cedar Shoals FFA members and lead faculty advisor Julie Throne for the National FFA Convention and Agroscience Fair. And she finished sixth in her division for the entire country. Quite an accomplishment. The National FFA Agroscience Fair for middle and high school students recognizes student researchers studying the application of agricultural scientific principles and emerging technologies in agricultural enterprises. Participation begins at the local level and progresses to state and national levels. Students compete in one of six categories with six divisions per category. Omnia's project, which placed sixth out of 32 national finalists in her animal systems division, focused on the effectiveness of different insecticides on mosquitoes' ability to develop resistance to the treatments. Omnia, we are so proud of you and at this time, we'd like to say congratulations. Let's give Omnia a hand. Wait right there, you gotta take a picture. And if Ms. Throne or Dr. Clark, if you would like to come up, we'd love to get a picture of you with Omnia as well. Board members, if you would like to make your way up. This young lady, one day, we're going to see on the front page of some science magazines and say, that was us with her then. Congratulations, Omnia. And I understand you are also a dual enrollment student, so you're getting college credit right now, right? Outstanding. Okay, everybody get in there, you know what to do. Ms. Throne, are you, is Ms. Throne here? Oh, mom, come on up, absolutely. Perfect. Look this way and smile. Again, congratulations, we can't wait to see what you do. Next up, we'd like to recognize our 25-26 cohort of CCSD REACH Scholars. These five eighth grade students, whose names you will see on the screen, are on track to be awarded academic scholarships through REACH Georgia, a needs-based mentoring and scholarship program providing students a framework of educational and financial support to aid their successful journey through high school and beyond. These students were selected by CCSD through an extensive multi-level process, including an application, school-based semifinalist selection, and a panel interview with REACH committee members and district staff. Scholars must maintain at least a 2.5 grade point average, exhibit good behavior, and maintain attendance throughout middle and high school to remain part of the program. Throughout their time in the program- Throughout their time in the program, the students will be assigned an academic coach who will monitor their progress, work with them to develop education and career plans, and identify the appropriate academic and social supports to ensure they remain on track to succeed. Upon program completion, students are awarded a $10,000 scholarship, which can be used at any hope-eligible institution in Georgia. A majority of Georgia colleges and universities match or double-match this scholarship, meaning that students can earn up to $30,000 in REACH scholarship money as they come out of high school. Each of the five REACH scholars participated in individual signing ceremonies at their schools with their families last month, signifying the students' commitment to complete the program successfully, as well as their families and the school district's commitment to support them on their educational journey. But we wanted to present them to you tonight and recognize them publicly here. When I say your name, if you'll just come to the stage, you'll stop there at Ms. Johnson, wave, Ms. Johnson, and then you'll make your way to the stage for some pictures. First up, we have Mary Jane Akoli from Bernie Harris Lyons Middle School. Mary Jane, come on up. Mary Jane had the highest score out of all the district REACH applicants. She has plans to study either radiology or cosmetology. Step right over there. We're going to keep you on the stage for picture as a group, just a little bit over. There we go, perfect. Next up, from Clark Middle School, we have Freedom Baldwin. Freedom, come on up. Freedom would like to study dance and has a dream of one day owning and operating her own dance studio. Freedom? Next, can we move over next to, uh-huh, perfect. Next, from Coyle Middle School, we have Aleah Fox. Aleah, come on up. Aleah has plans of one day becoming a real estate agent. Also from Coyle Middle School, we have Sofia Ramirez Ramirez. Sofia, come on up to the stage. Sofia plans to one day become a molecular pathologist. And finally, from Hillsman Middle School, Diana Martinez. Diana, come on up. Diana would like to one day attend Emory University, where she plans to major in nursing. Let's give another big round of applause to the newest members of the cohort of REACH Scholars. At this time, I'd like to ask their principals and family members and whoever wants to come up and is here to support them to join them on stage, because these are the people who you're going to need to rely on to get through and get that money, right? So come on up, families, principals, teachers, mentors, come on up to the stage. And I think as they come, we'll see, they have a pretty strong support system here. So the future is very bright for these young people. As they're making their way and getting in position, we're going to take a picture right over here, but I will tell you that the REACH Scholarship Program relies on donations from the community and businesses. So any business or individual who is interested in supporting this program can do so by making a donation to the CCSD District Fund through the Athens Area Community Foundation. Look this way, smile. Now say, REACH. Yay, congratulations, you may be seated. Next up, we'd like to recognize our Employee of the Month for December. Our Employee of the Month this month is Sonia Winfrey, Nursing Clinic Assistant at Cedar Shoals High School. Ms. Winfrey, please make your way to the stage. Ms. Winfrey has nearly 20 years of dedicated service with CCSD and was a paraprofessional at Witt Davis Elementary School prior to coming over to Cedar Shoals. She did this when we surprised her, too. There were no tears. There were pretty feet and hands on the hips. Beautiful pose. She started as a front office receptionist and then moved over to the nursing clinic four years ago. Ms. Winfrey was nominated for this award by Cedar Shoals Nurse Eve Bessard, who said that transition from the front office to the nursing clinic went smoothly due to Ms. Winfrey having already established wonderful, trusting relationships with majority of our Cedar students and families. Nurse Bessard also praised Ms. Winfrey for playing a vital role in Cedar receiving a 100% for the last three years on its 11th grade immunization audit from the Georgia Department of Public Health. Nurse Bessard writes that Ms. Winfrey is the gold standard when it comes to representing CCSD and Cedar Shoals. She is respectful, professional, caring, approachable, and has an amazing work ethic. She is also dedicated to our CCSD and Cedar Shoals community. Not only does she support me in supporting students, staff, and families in need of health care for the school day, she also supports many of our Cedar sporting events, accepting assignments she has offered for after-school and weekend events. Ms. Winfrey knows and loves everyone, and everyone knows and loves Ms. Winfrey. While she knows everyone, she performs her duties with integrity, always very respectful of and maintaining students, families, and staff members confidentiality. She understands the importance of and demonstrates daily cultural competency when working with our amazingly diverse student population, assisting with shaping an inclusive, positive cultural environment for Cedar Shoals. She responds without hesitation to all emergency calls. She is eager to learn and always ready to assist. Ms. Winfrey is an amazing person, colleague, and employee. CCSD and Cedar Shoals High School are truly blessed to have her as part of the family. Please join me in congratulating and thanking our Employee of the Month, Sonia Winfrey. At this time, I'll ask you stay right there. If you have anybody with you who would like to come up, please do so. Dr. Clark, I'll ask you to come up, any of our nursing staff, please come up for a picture and board. It's time to make that trek one more time to support our Employee of the Month. And while everyone's making their way up, we also want to thank the Athens Area Chamber of Commerce and local businesses for once again supporting our Employee of the Month by contributing to the winner's gift bag. There's a lot of really good stuff in there. As a reminder, any member of our community may nominate any full-time CCSD employee with at least one year of service for this award. You can go to the link on the screen to get started on your nomination. Our next Employee of the Month is just a month away, so go ahead and nominate an employee now. Thank you, Ms. Winfrey, for all you do and for representing us so well. And finally, tonight, we have a short presentation with some special guests from our partners at ACC.gov. Recently, the Athens-Clark County Solid Waste Department was awarded a $25,000 Made-to-be-remade Community Grant funded by the Georgia Beverage Association and the Keep Georgia Beautiful Foundation, of which CCSD will be a prime beneficiary. This grant supports local efforts to strengthen recycling and sustainability. The project focuses on helping CCSD improve our recycling infrastructure through the availability of additional collection bins, increased signage, and education materials, as well as other resources that make recycling easier and more effective for our schools. The ACC.gov Waste Reduction Division will be working closely with school staff and students to determine what improvements are needed and how we can make the biggest impact. And some of that work has already gotten underway and is being led by our new sustainability coordinator, who you've already met tonight, Mr. Randy Priest. As you can see on the screen there, Mr. Priest and several members of the ACC Solid Waste Team were at Witt Davis Elementary School earlier this week, conducting a waste audit, providing a closer look at what's ending up in our trash and recycling bins so that we can understand how well our current systems are working. And I have to tell you, I saw him shortly thereafter, I have never seen anybody so excited to have played in the trash. And you had got a good day's work, didn't you? By sorting and measuring the waste, we'll learn where recycling is going well, where contamination is happening, and what materials can be diverted from the landfill. The results will guide improvements to recycling and waste reduction efforts across the district. And we're very excited and pleased to be part of this. We're pleased to be joined by the people you see on the stage, Mr. Kevin Perry, president of the Georgia Beverage Association, who will be presenting the check to Mr. Priest, as well as the following people, wave at us when I say your name. Denise Young, Sukie Jansen, Abby Sawyer, Matt Slakovsky, and Stacy Farrell. Now, if I could ask Dr. Scott and the board to come up, we want you also, of course, as CCSD is the beneficiary, to be here as this check is presented, because this is one of the first steps in making a real difference towards our dreams of sustainability in action. Get settled and then look this way, we've got some cameras and some phones and, again, we want to be able to look back at this and say, remember when we started this journey? Got it? All right, at this time, I would like to ask, as you all make your way back, Mr. Perry to come to the podium just to share some brief remarks with us. Mr. Perry?
Well, thank you all, and I'll be brief, because I know you have a lot of business to get to tonight, but on behalf of the beverage industry, I'm pleased to present the check for $25,000 from Made-to-be-remade Georgia in support of Athens-Clark County School Government's efforts to revitalize school recycling throughout the Clark County School District. We're proud to help support your efforts to remake and re-energize school recycling by providing essential new infrastructure for schools, athletic venues, and refreshed branding and comprehensive education and outreach. This project reflects our shared dedication to recycling and environmental stewardship. The beverage industry remains dedicated to advancing recycling education and reinforcing the value of our 100% recyclable bottles and cans. Our goal is to ensure these containers are collected and remade into new beverage packaging rather than becoming waste in our landfills, waterways, or oceans. We believe that community-based initiatives such as this are essential to building stronger recycling systems and delivering meaningful environmental impact. We commend your leadership and dedication to Made-to-be-remade Georgia and look forward to celebrating the outcomes of your important work. Thank you all.
And thank you again to our partners at ACC.gov and the Georgia Beverage Association. These are the kind of partnerships that can really allow us to do great things. So thank you all very much for being here this evening and for your dedication and contributions. Dr. Scott, that concludes our recognitions. I will now turn it back over to Dr. Anderson and the board for any recognitions that you all might like to share. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Dr. Moore, and congratulations to all of our award recipients and celebrated teams and individuals tonight. And if you were here simply for that purpose, you're welcome to leave, our feelings will not be hurt. Now, we will move on to our public comments, item five on our agenda, and I do have a list here. But before we do that, I will go ahead and read out our, our policy, BCBI, on public comment. Each individual speaker will have up to three minutes to speak, at which point remarks must be concluded. Signs, flags, and banners are prohibited inside the boardroom. Only residents of Clark County, representatives or businesses or organizations located in Clark County, parents or guardians of students attending the school district, or employees may speak. The board recommends that multiple speakers from a group or organization appoint a single representative to address the board. Speakers may bring printed or other supporting materials. These materials should be given to the superintendent or designee and can be distributed to board members. Issues involving individual employees or students in pending litigation are not subject for public participation. Speakers may not engage in disorderly, disruptive, disturbing, delaying, or boisterous conduct, such as, but not limited to, hand clapping, stomping of feet, whistling, making noise, use of profane language, obscene gestures, yelling, or similar demonstrations. The board will not respond to comments made during public participation, but the district may respond to public comment as needed or appropriately within 10 working days. To protect the privacy of students, speakers are requested to refrain from identifying specific students by name, and no individual or group shall be retaliated against in any manner for speaking during public participation. Our first speaker tonight is John Williams.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson, I appreciate your time tonight. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm here tonight to speak on the quitclaim deed issue at Jackson Street. I live at 30 River Shoals Drive on the President and CEO of WNAT Engineering. I'm here with Andrew Savoy and David Ellison tonight also. I think you've got the information in your packets. This is a project we've been working on for the last year. It's a joint development effort between the ADDA, Athens-Clark County, and our developer. There's a lot of information about the project itself. We're here happy to answer any questions tonight about the project in any detail you would like. But through the course of the title research, as we were looking at the parcels that the ADDA controlled that Athens-Clark County owned, we found this issue come to be. It's a very small remnant parcel that's on the opposite side of Jackson Street, where I understand your old school board office was. And when that property was dedicated to Athens-Clark County, this piece just didn't, just got missed in the 60s and 70s when that was done. So since it's a title issue, we're just asking tonight that you guys agree with the recommendations and approve the quitclaim deed to Athens-Clark County so that we can move forward with the project. But we're here as a team to answer any questions you have. If you want any more specifics about the project, we'll be happy to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next, we have Jamie Mays.
Good evening, board members and district office leadership. Four years ago, I chose to run to be elected to the local school governance team at my child's school. One of the things that I'm most proud of from those four years of service are afternoon extensions, a targeted approach to enriching after-school activities sponsored by the LSG Team's Innovation Fund. The original idea was hatched before I even joined the team, and it took two years of development and research to get the plan off the ground. Our first year of implementation was filled with trial and error, and it became clear that the element that we were missing was full integration with after-school programming. The program wasn't going to work as an addendum to ASP, it needed to be fully braided into the daily schedule, culture, and expectations of ASP. But the leadership turnover in ASP is very high, and that makes it really hard to expand programming. So when I realized the position was open and the schedule aligned with my current work schedule, it felt like the natural order of things was making itself clear. I've almost finished my first semester in my role as the after-school co-coordinator, and it's been a bit of a revelation to see how things work from the perspective of an employee. It's also been a confirmation that the families in our community truly do rely on the childcare provided by ASP. I'm very pleased that ASP is now under Mrs. Bonaz's leadership, and I know that it will take some time for strategic changes to roll out at schools, but I have to speak up. The folks who are working in ASP aren't doing it for the money, they're doing it for the kids. They're committed to doing their part to ensure that our community has childcare so that parents can finish the workday. When I see the majority of ASP workers are people of color and women, as a middle-class white woman, I have to use my position and privilege to speak up about some of the policies in place. Childcare workers across the country are devalued, low wages and high turnover in a job that is often labeled as unskilled. Part-time workers, ASP workers like myself, in Clark County schools are classified as temporary workers. I can assure you that the high turnover here isn't happening because the folks taking these positions believe their jobs should be classified as temporary. The district must communicate to the ASP workers and the ASP coordinators that they are valuable and truly an integral part of the community. To do that, you need to consult with these workers and give them a seat at the table. If this district really wants after-school programming to support and bolster the work that is happening during the school day, you'll need to actively seek out and be receptive to the feedback from the folks working in ASP. As you look to develop and improve programming, I hope you'll be thoughtful and proactive in including, and proactive in including these folks in redrafting policies that prioritize sustainable employment, thriving wages, and meaningful professional development. Please don't neglect to include these workers in your goals for teacher retention. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next, we have David Ellison.
David Ellison, 2500 Daniels Bridge Road. Just to follow up on John Williams' comments about the quick claim deed, we'd ask that you please approve this so that this title issue can be resolved. Clearing this title issue would be necessary to prevent, to allow this property to be used by anything other than a surface parking lot that's owned by the unified government. If this project goes through, Athens Clark County believes that the tax assessed value of this property will go from $25 million to $175 million, which would go to $1.3 million per year to the school district. So we'd ask that you please approve this to allow that this surface parking lot be used for something other than that and to allow our project to go forward. Thank you.
Thank you. And last, we have Andrew Savoy.
Good evening. I'm Andy Savoy, 1400 North Kingsbury, Chicago, Illinois. I'm here with David Ellison and John Williams, and I don't really have anything to add. I signed up before I knew that they already signed up, so I'll yield the rest of my time, but I'm here to answer any questions. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Brevity is always appreciated. That is the last that I have a public comment unless there are speakers in the room who did not have an opportunity to sign up. Okay. We will move on to item seven, the consent agenda.
You adopt the agenda.
Oops, sorry. Item six, to adopt the agenda as presented.
Make a motion that we adopt the agenda as presented.
Second.
All right, motion made by Mr. Evans and seconded by Dr. Jaeger. All in favor of approving the agenda? Please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that motion passes unanimously. And now we are at our consent agenda. And as a reminder to the public, all of these items listed below are going to be voted on in one motion and have already been discussed at our work session. We have items A through K. There's a lot of them. I won't read them. I think we can all see what's presented before us. So I need a motion.
I so moved that the consent agenda be approved as presented.
Second.
Okay, that motion is made and seconded by Mrs. Davis and Dr. Jaeger. Any discussion? Nope. All in favor of approving the consent agenda as presented? Please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that motion passes unanimously. Now we are on to our business items for individual vote. The first up is our quick claim deed of .133 acres on Jackson Street. Okay. I need a motion first.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I second.
All right, motion to approve is made by Mr. Denson, seconded by Mrs. Davis. Floor is open for our discussion.
Ms. Bagby? Ms. Davis?
I saw the plans and I saw the tiny slice of land there, and I'm real excited about the possibilities for that development, and I fully support this, so thank you.
Dr. Jaeger?
Mr. Denson? I'll just state, like, even if the specific development doesn't go through, like, we're talking about the property that way is sitting with us right now, we're getting no taxes off of it. It's in, you know, we could actually be getting some revenue from this, so I think this makes sense for us that we go and do the quick claim deed.
Dr. Gant?
Just, I have some concerns, but I want to be sure that I'm understanding, I have the right understanding. This is related to, I think, based on what you sent us, Dr. Scott, the core, is like the core project? I think that was in the original email that was sent to us. Sorry, I have like 100 tabs up. I just had it. Give me one second. And I guess I'm just trying to, yeah, here it is. The core redevelopment project. And I know that there have been some pretty strong community concerns that have been shared at the mayor and commission meeting, particularly people who are native to Athens, African-American communities, feeling that, you know, this is just one more step towards the overdevelopment of an area that historically has been overdeveloped in, where there's a history, there's a significant history. And so I have some concerns about, I would like us to sort of slow down. I think what I gathered from the last public conversation is that this is not like a finalized, this isn't a finalized decision. And I know it's just a tiny slither. It's really just a tiny slither of land, but I think with the feedback that's been shared, there has been a lot of community concern about this. And so I have some concerns, and I would love to speak a little bit more with the mayor and commission or in different groups that have concerns about this. I do understand that we do get, it's not developed right now, and so, but I do think also there's a balance that we have to strike. And so I think it's important for us to hear from the community, the same community that has had the concerns with the mayor and commission, because this is the same project. It's just that we have like a little, small, tiny little portion.
Okay, so that was the first round of, sorry, Mr. Evans? Did you have?
I have. No, no.
Okay. So that was the first round of thoughts or questions. Welcome to entertain a second round if anyone wants to elaborate or add anything.
Ms. Davis?
So I did go to a presentation yesterday where the developer actually had contractors come in to present their opportunities to work with them on this project. And that was the first time I had a very up-close view of what the project actually is. I saw our tiny little slither of land that is a part of this, and it truly is not impacting the high concerns out of the community that I'm a part of as well, that had major concerns about the disappearance of Lay Park. That was the big concern in the playground around that area. These are not going to be impacted by this. The Lay Park gym is not a part of this development. There will be a movement of part of the playground, but it will be replaced. And so I felt so privileged, one, to be in that meeting, and two, to actually see the plan on in three dimensions. So again, my concerns are allayed, and that's a hard thing to happen for me. So yes, [laughing] yes, I'm all about preserving what's left of the community, but no, this is definitely not one of those situations where I think that it would be impactful to us. This is actually less impactful than the decision that we made on the West Broad Street. But yeah, I feel good about this, if that helps.
Okay.
My apologies, ma'am. Ms. Bagby, I did not, I'm sorry. I saw Ms. Davis's light go straight on, and I was like, okay, all right. Dr. Jaeger, do you have any comment? Mr. Denson? Dr. Gant?
Yes, I am aware that Lay Park is not impacted, but I think there are small, small decisions that are made over time. I don't think that we are able to fully tell what will be impacted in the future. This project ultimately, from my understanding, will be a 1,400, from what was shared with us, a 1,400-bed student housing development. And I think it's just, it's a, there's tension there. It's a fine balance between being sure that we, of course, that we have housing and being sure that, you know, any type of like tax revenue is helpful, but I also think that the communities are gentrified. I don't think that people in that moment believe that the one decision they're making is actually going to lead to gentrification. At least I have not heard anyone state that. And so I don't think we can tell, and I'm not saying that, I'm not necessarily saying no, but I'm saying I don't think that we have had enough conversations with the communities that have those beliefs. And yes, it's a tiny little slither, and I understand that there have been some opportunities to learn more, but there is still some pretty significant concerns that one small step, one small decision at a time is where the erasure comes from. Most times not like major decisions. And so I would, because from my understanding right now, this is still being negotiated and discussed, then I would like for us, I don't know that we, I don't know that there's urgency for us to decide it tonight that that is what hap, so I would offer a substitute motion that we table, we table this until January.
Okay, so a substitute motion is now on the floor, and that needs to be discussed and/or seconded. Sorry, seconded and then brought up for discussion.
I'll second.
Okay. So any thoughts from?
Dr. Scott, or Dr. Anderson, if I may, there, I think there is a timeline for everything that the mayor and commission and other involved parties have to do. I'm not sure. You may want to hear from the representatives here before you vote.
Well, any of the members of the board are welcome to ask direct questions to, I'm not going to invite them to do a presentation, but if members of the board want to ask specific questions to our guests, they're welcome to at this time.
I guess I'd like to know how the, I'm still trying to figure out where the little sliver is, given the maps that we have, and how it impacts the development. I'd like to know more about that.
Ms. Palmer, do you mind pulling up the map that is on the, I believe it's the fifth And kind of, do you mind zooming in on that green, I think it's blue, the blue portion on that map so that it's clear for our audience and our board members, the piece of that parcel that we, that is in discussion? Okay. So does everyone see that? We're talking about that blue sliver, that blue triangle that's right there on North Jackson Street. It's about 5,500 square feet. Okay, so does that answer your question, Dr. Jaeger? Okay. Does anyone else have any questions for our guests or any comments before we vote on the substitute motion that's on the floor?
Well, I asked them to address the question about how does it affect the development?
Oh, okay.
Timing of the development.
Okay, our guest?
It would affect our ability to take title to the property. I mean, we have to clear the title to the property before we can do that. And the mayor and commission has planned for a vote on the development agreement for January the 6th, and that's the kind of the community benefits agreement or the memorandum of understanding about how the whole thing works. All the information that you received about the development, the incentives, the community incentives that the developer's doing, from fixing the sewer downtown to the participating in the inclusionary housing, to rebuilding the park, to donating $275,000 to the county to build another playground in the park, to relocate in the whorehouse, to put in a historic facade easement on the foundry, to build a parking deck for Athens Clark County. All that is in that agreement. And that parking deck they're building for Athens Clark County, 200 of those spaces are being paid for by the developer. The remaining of them are going to be financed by the developer for the Athens Clark County Development Authority. So the kind of the timeline horizon is that that agreement gets voted on on January the 6th, and then that really triggers the events that happen after that, which lead to the ADDA, who now controls this property, swapping this property with the developer for another piece of property that is north of this, well, planned north of this map, where the parking deck will be built and given to the ADDA at that point in time. So it's sort of a series of events that we've had to kind of line up the stars for, and this is the, you know, the time when we needed to get the title cleared up.
Okay.
If that helps.
Okay. Other members?
Mr. Denson? Dr. Gant?
So the January 6th date, that is, that's the date that the mayor and commission votes. I mean, that's their timeline. And I think just like with other, you know, agenda items that we receive, other people's timelines aren't all, I mean, they, that may not necessarily have to have implications for our timeline. It's December, and we are going into the break, and we are going to make a decision about a tiny piece of land for what sounds like, I mean, a solid development, but without having been like explored and heard from like the people that have concerns about this. So I'm not inclined to, you know, to feel urgency with the January 6th timeline. I am inclined to hear from the community. I do hear that there are some community benefits and being discussed and in place, and I think those are great. But I also think part of our responsibility is to, just to be sure we've done what we can to hear from those communities that have concerns.
Okay, we have a substitute motion on the floor. I think we've exhausted everyone's thoughts so far and can vote on the substitute motion, which is to table this agenda item and revisit it at our January meeting. Let me just ask, just for clarity, before we do this vote, what is the expectation of what's going to happen between now and January? Because if this presents itself again at the January meeting and there's been no plan of what the expectations are between now and January, then we're going to have this discussion all over again. So what is the ask if it's going to be tabled? What's the ask?
I think, oh, I'm sorry.
Anyone who's?
Dr. Gant, you made the motion.
You made the motion.
Dr. Gant made the motion.
Well, I think part of the ask is for us to get updated on the community conversations. And I think it's true, we may have the conversation over again. But, you know, housing in Athens, this is a very, I mean, it's a big deal. And so I think at the very least, we need to reach out to commissioners and hear a little bit more regarding their perspectives. My guess is that there are probably some differing thoughts. But most important, we need to reach out to constituents that have shared concerns, and I don't think we have to look far on the internet and social media or even at meetings where concerns have been shared. And even if at the end of that, the goal is, or the work is just being sure people have the most updated and accurate information, that's fine. But I think the ask, I mean, as a governing body, we, you know, we have to determine what we can do to hear from as many people as we can as individuals. So that would be my thing, but, I mean, other people can determine based on what, you know, what their thoughts are, what they think is appropriate.
Okay. All right, all in favor of Miss Davis?
I'm sorry.
Your light is on?
Yes, so may I make a comment or?
Yeah, that's what I was, do you want to say something?
Yes, again, so the meeting that I attended was a meeting for the general contractors to express interest in being a part of this development effort. And the people that I typically hear from all the time, when there is a concern around housing or anything that impacts the community, were in this meeting. So I would definitely say that read like a who's who, who shows an interest and who shows up and who has concerns. And so there was an opportunity for them to have that discussion with the developers. And I did not hear any opposition to what is happening. I did hear the same things that we often hear, is that too much student housing, that doesn't usually yield. is that too much student housing, that doesn't usually yield anything other than it's a concern that there is a lot of student housing and what that does to the community long term. Again, so I'm not sure, and I'm not trying to convince you of anything, I'm simply relating to you what I heard. Those same people that speak out often about the concern for gentrification about public housing, this is not a neighborhood under gentrification. This is undeveloped property here yet, right? So that gentrification for this neighborhood happened with the last development, right? So that, to me, is where I sit. And again, from my experience in Athens, I heard a lot of support for this initiative as opposed to any opposition from the people that I think are most vocal. I did hear concerns about, you know, the payout terms in terms of contractors doing the work. That was the one, number one concern that I heard in the meeting yesterday. I think it was yesterday. So again, just as information, there are conversations that are being held. And I think how do we tap into those conversations when we have the developer and the community in the room? It becomes a challenge if we're not there. I wasn't there representing the school board. I was there in a capacity that I serve in the community.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor. All in favor of tabling this particular agenda item for the January meeting and in the interim, individually reaching out to community constituents and getting feedback on their thoughts on this particular item in the meantime. All in favor of tabling, raise your hand high and say aye. Okay, so it's two?
Just two.
Okay. Any opposed?
Nay.
So that motion did not pass, two to five?
Two to five.
Four, five. Okay, so now we are back to our original motion to, was the motion to approve?
Motion to approve, yes.
Okay, original motion, we are back to our original motion to approve the quit claim deed. So I think we had already discussed it, right? It was already on the floor for discussion. Okay. So all in favor of approving the quit claim deed, please raise your hand high and say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay, yes. Okay. So that motion passes five to. All right. Battery keeps dying. Thank you. Now we are at item B for our October 2025 financials. Mr. Greiner?
All right, thank you, Dr. Anderson. You have before you the financials as of October 31st, so four months into the year. As I mentioned last month, our actual revenue is a little over 133 million. That's because our property tax here in Clark County is due October 20th. So I was sitting there thinking about this. Our total budget was 254 last year, so we've already received revenues over half of our budget four months into the year. So we started off about fund balance, just keep that in mind. As we, you know, we always talk about it starts, we're at the high point now. We'll start trending now. So keep in mind, we're over 50% of our total revenues right now. So we were 13 million higher than our budget. Our tax, it's always hard to predict how much is going to come in in October and November, so when I do my estimate, you know, the monthly estimate, it's just hard to predict. So we were 13 million over this month. You'll see in November, we'll swing the other way. It's just a, it's the timing of the cash flow. For us, it's a little bit better to get them in October because we get to invest them, you know, a little bit longer. And we're investing mostly at 4% right now. So it's a little bit more interest for us that we can add to the general fund as well for other items. Actual expenditures, we were almost at 73 million. We were budgeted at 72 and a half, 305, or 306,000 higher. It's 0.4%, so not much variation there. Looking, kind of projecting out of the year, we're kind of right on track. You do salaries, benefits, we can kind of take that August payroll and kind of really project it. It shouldn't change that much over the rest of the year. So I feel real good where we're at expenditure-wise. General fund, we have a fund balance, again, of 114 million. We're at the high point now. That'll start trending down. Again, the budgeted amount was like 101.5. That's just that difference in revenues, so. Where are we at with the audit? Y'all don't have it afraid, but I just figured I'd give a quick update. We should have a draft financial statements by next week, and then the audit will be completely finalized by the end of January, more than likely. The federal government was a little late with their single audit, compliance supplement. It didn't come out till the last week in November. So they're still doing a little bit of compliance testing on the audit, so. I'll be happy to answer any questions y'all may have.
Thank you, Mr. Greiner. Any questions?
Ms. Bagby, do you have any questions for Mr. Greiner? Ms. Davis? Dr. Yeager?
Mr. Denson? Dr. Gant?
Good job as always, sir.
All right.
Thank you so much. All right. So now we can vote on, or can make a motion?
Make a motion that we accept Dr. Gre- Mr. Greiner's report as written.
Okay. Motion made by Mr. Evans and seconded by Dr. Yeager. Any discussion? I don't think so. All in favor of approving our October 2025 financials? Please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right, that motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Greiner.
Thank you.
We'll see you in 2026. All right, next up, we have the purchase of 11 new Bluebird school buses for 26, 27 school year. Just to kind of wrap up our discussion from our work session, there's some concerns about our sustainability plan and whether or not the purchase of these 11 buses meets the board's expectations that we would be moving towards a more sustainable Clark County school district. It was discussed that the majority of those buses were for chairlifts purposes, and those do not have a viable EV option. But two of those buses are propane and not requiring a lift. And there may be some, some option for EV, I don't know. But there's no infrastructure. Okay, I think I summarized it. So we can now start with a motion and then a discussion, moving past what we've already discussed. Any new information or new questions or concerns?
I'll make a motion to table this item until January.
Second.
Okay, motion has been made by Mr. Denson and seconded by Dr. Yeager to table this item until our January meeting. Are there any thoughts, justifications, questions that you have for the district to return to us in January?
Ms. Bagby?
I think we need to open it to the motion maker first, if that's okay? Because it is a discussion to table, so what are the expectations? No, you're fine.
Yeah, my expectations would be requesting that staff and the new sustainability coordinator go back and look at some potential alternatives when it comes to those, those two buses and what other infrastructure we could do, yeah, that wouldn't have us purchasing these as propane.
Yeah, I'd like to see this purchase put in the context of a five-year plan. I mean, maybe not even a 10-year plan, just a five-year plan of where we are, how many buses we need, what kind of infrastructure we need, and what's the vision for the district's transportation needs. And I know that's a lot to put on your plate, Randy. But I think we need to start that conversation before we spend another $2 million.
Ms. Bagby? Ms. Davis?
So I was at the COC meeting this week, and obviously there was a lot of discussion about this, the bringing on propane buses as well. But what I heard in that meeting is that, you know, all of our buses are on a schedule, right? And so these buses are already behind in terms of being replaced, right? And I think a lot of that was put on hold because of the purchase of the two EV buses. And so again, that's information that I learned in that meeting. I don't think I heard that same information tonight. So if we're on a schedule for replacing the buses as they age out based on when they were last purchased, I don't know that it's necessary to delay the purchase for the five-year plan because I don't think that we're going to build an infrastructure in a month or two months. And I don't know that delaying it prolongs the life of the buses. And so I would ask us to, if anything, let's do that. I think they already have an audit of what the transportation needs are in the district. I brought up the concern around, do we need to stop busing so much? Can we do something with our patterns of where we move kids around? So there's a whole lot that can happen here to do exactly what you're asking for, but also to better assess the other options out there for moving children from one place to another. And in terms of the size of the buses, does it need to be a huge passenger-sized bus or a small bus? What other alternatives do we have? And so I would ask that that study be one that we receive from the district that, again, looks at what are the routes like? Can we do something with shorter-term transportation that can be EV? Does it, do you even need to have a CDL license to drive the buses? I mean, so we can look at other things, but I don't think it changes the fact that you've got an aging fleet that needs to be replaced to transport our most fragile children. Okay? So that's my thought.
Dr. Gant?
Is this about the motion to table?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, yes. I do, I am going to support the motion to table, but also just want to, you know, point out the irony of needing a five-year plan for transportation and giving a piece of land to the county without knowing fully what that development will entail. So that's pretty concerning. But I will be supporting the motion to table.
Okay.
Do you mind running this for me?
Yes. Mr. Evans?
Dr. Elder? If we don't, if we don't get, so my understanding is that it's the special ed buses that are the most needed? Is that what my understanding is? So what is, what is our liability if we don't have those buses? What are we looking at? What's our risk, is what I'm asking?
Well, I think they alluded to they are going to have to invest in some that were already phased out. And so we would be spending money on buses that are already out of date. But what it could mean until that point is that some of our most fragile students are going to be routed in a slower way. I mean, there's only so many buses. That's going to delay, could potentially delay their access to instruction and longer routes home. If there's less buses and still those, those needs for those specialized buses.
Yeah, I'm getting a little tired of the demically sword above our heads on this. I'm with you, Dr. Anderson. I mean, we made it fairly clear, I think, that the, and it's not our will, it's the will of the people that we represent, that we want sustainable things. And for us to be at this position again, right? And how do we break out of the cycle? I'm at a point where, I mean, I can't support the table because I can't, because we've got children who need to get to school, and we, and what I'm hearing is that we're, we're going to have to spend the money anyway on older buses that are probably going to be worse polluters than the new ones that we get. So either way, right, this is a terrible decision that is, once again, that we have to make. And I, and I'm with, I want a five-year plan. Mr. Priest, I'm glad you're here because we need this plan, right? Because we're not just, this is not nine people up here talking. I mean, this is the people that we represent back home. This is what they want, all right? So if we can make that a priority, I would really appreciate that. Thank you.
And I think speaking from the perspective of the buses that are on there, so to your point, Mr. Denson, is it a space where we, because we know that there's not an option for the special ed buses that's EV. And so is there a space that we're considering the other two buses? Is what I heard you say? Okay.
Mr. Denson?
I guess if it, if it, you know, if the, if the board was in agreement and the administration, I mean, I guess I would be happy to pull back my, my motion to table and instead make a motion to divide the question so that we can vote separately on, on the eight buses for special needs and then the two others separately? If that would, if that would get us past this issue that we're facing.
Okay, so there is currently a, a motion. What you are, are you saying you'd like to make a friendly amendment to the motion that you originally made?
I was stating that I would remove the motion from the table.
Okay.
And make that as a separate motion.
Okay. And that is your, that's your prerogative? Would you?
Yes, it is. And I just, if that, I don't want to go through all that work for us if it didn't seem to be support, but, yeah. I guess seeming like that is our best, best thing forward, I will remove my motion to table and instead put on the table a motion that we divide the question.
Okay. So there is a motion now on the floor to divide the, the request. And from this conversation, it sounds like the division would be to purchase the wheelchair-accessible buses to approve the, or to vote to approve those tonight, and then to explore alternatives for the purchase of the two propane, non-accessible buses. Is that correct? I need the district to confirm.
I think it's, the motion is just to divide the question into two separate motions. If that's approved, you get a second for that, and it's approved, then you'll vote on the eight bus purchase and then a vote on the two bus purchase.
Okay.
And at the time the two bus purchase comes up, a member may make a motion to table that one.
Okay. I just needed clarity on the numbers. That's all I'm asking for. So are we saying, what is it, nine wheelchair-accessible, to vote on nine wheelchair-accessible buses?
It is nine, I'm sorry.
And then to vote on two non-wheelchair-accessible? Okay. All right, so there is a motion now on the floor to split that vote into two. I need a second?
I'll second.
I'll second.
I need clarity.
Yeah, Mrs. Bagby?
So is it that we are supposed to be voting to purchase eight buses? But Mr. Evans posed a question, are we liable if we don't purchase? So are two of the buses going to afford the special needs? So are we can go here and vote to approve for the two buses that's for special need and table to consider the other?
Okay, I just, so to clarify, this is to split the vote in two. And potentially the vote would be to approve, to vote to approve eight?
Nine.
Nine. Nine wheelchair-accessible buses that would be propane because we don't have an EV alternative for them. And then perhaps vote for two buses that do not need wheelchair accessibility, but would be propane. So that, that would potentially be the split vote. Okay? Did that make sense, Mrs. Bagby?
Where does the five-year plan come in?
That five-year plan is not embedded into this motion. It's, that's a separate conversation. That could perhaps happen if we move forward with the second to this motion. I just want to make sure before we second any motion that the full, the whole board understands what we're, what the motion is. Okay, so are we clear on what this motion is? Okay, can I get a second? I think I had one.
Second, yes, ma'am.
Okay, so that motion's been seconded by Mr. Evans. Now we can open it up for clarity on what we want the split vote to look like.
Mr. Denson, would you mind clarifying this for us, please?
Yeah, the, yeah, what I'm motioning for is that we will divide the question where we're going to vote separately on the nine propane buses. And then we will vote separately on the two 72 passenger regular buses.
Okay. So now we are good on the motion and the second. All in favor of, are there more, are there more comments?
I guess I heard that this very large purchase of, they're not special buses, I don't think. I think they just have a lift. They just have a lift, a wheelchair lift and a space for the wheelchair. They're the same bus.
They were speaking about regulations earlier, and they were saying that the EV options, that they did identify that the had wheelchair lifts did not meet the regulations of these. state, I believe it was, for what those buses must.
Is that what you said?
The shop.
The shop, the regulations.
The shop's regulations.
The wheelchair buses are 48-passenger buses.
Do you mind, do you mind, I'm sorry, so that our audience can hear?
Yeah, yeah, hello. So the wheelchair buses are 48-passenger buses as opposed to the 72, so they're, they're larger than like what you would traditionally think of as like a short bus or a smaller bus, and they have the wheelchair lift. As far as why we make the decisions, it comes from the shop, and from my understanding is it has to do with like the ability to take seats out, to, to help our students with certain things they need. I don't think it's so much regulations, it's so much, it's more the shop has guidance as far as what they want to see in a bus, and so we follow the shop's guidance, is my understanding.
Mm-hmm.
I also want to clarify that the wheelchair buses, there's eight propane and one gas. I don't think that was ever mentioned, but just to clarify that, it's, it's nine buses, eight of them being propane and one of them being gas.
And why is that?
There's some apprehension from manufacturers with propane, so they wanted to make sure that in the long term, we have an option as far as a gas bus.
So we're buying eight potentially useless buses. This makes no sense to me. I'm sorry. I'm voting no.
Other, we've got a motion to, to split it to approve one, I don't know.
Nine, nine buses.
Okay, so is the motion currently to approve the nine buses?
Yep, it's just to split it.
It's just to split it, okay. All right. So there's a motion on the floor to split this vote. All in favor of approving the motion to split the vote into whatever batches?
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? Okay, so that motion passes six to one. So now, another motion to propel this forward?
Now, we have the two questions. So this one is the nine buses.
It would still be a motion, Mr. Denson, right? We have to approve something?
Well, yeah, I will make, I'll make a motion for us to approve the purchase of the eight 48-passenger propane wheelchair buses and the one 48-passenger gas wheelchair bus.
Okay. All right, motion made and seconded. I think everyone's thoughts are on the table. I don't think we need to belabor this conversation. Let's just go ahead and vote. So the motion to approve the purchase of nine buses, eight propane, one gas, all in favor, please raise your hand high and say aye?
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, I don't know where that vote fell. Can somebody, hmm? Okay. Okay, so that motion passes, and now we need the motion for the other batch of buses.
I'd like to make a motion that we table the conversation on the two propane buses that are 72-passenger.
Okay.
Second.
All right, motion's been made to second the, sorry, to table the discussion for our January work session, and this is, I'm assuming that this is to provide the district the opportunity to perhaps develop a plan or explore other options, or do we have a specific ask so that we're not just sending them on a?
Yes, ma'am. I think what we're asking from the district is that they, they look to see if there are maybe some alternatives that we haven't, maybe some out-of-the-box thinking. Maybe they could may, meet with Ms. Davis and myself, because at GSBA, we met with a bunch of people who had transportation ideas that we thought were rather interesting. So we're asking that the board table this at this time so we can find maybe a better solution for our community.
Okay. All right, so that motion has been made and seconded, I believe. Yes. Okay, so are we ready for a vote? All in favor of tabling the discussion for the purchase of the two non-wheelchair-accessible propane buses, please raise your hand high and say aye?
Aye.
Okay, any opposed?
None.
Okay, abstentions. All right, so everyone voted?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that motion passes six to one. Hopefully we know what we've asked for and we'll get it. Okay. Wireless upgrade purchase, need a motion?
Has the purchase been made as recommended?
I'll second.
All right, motion made by Mrs. Davis and seconded by Mr. Denson. Any discussion? Since this item was pulled by somebody, I'm assuming.
It was, yeah, it was pulled by me. I just, I think I need to go and maybe explore a little bit more the connection between like these, like multi-year contracts and our disparities, goals, but yeah, I'll, I plan on supporting it.
Okay. All right, did you want to move down the line to see if there were any others before we vote?
Ms. Bagby, do you have anything? Ms. Davis?
I support the, the need for us to take a look at the multi-year contracts and how they're embedded in a process that doesn't require the board's approval on a lot of purchases.
Okay.
It's a byproduct of this motion.
Dr. Jaeger? Mr. Denson? I have nothing, ma'am.
Okay. So just to respond to a couple of those question, comments, it, it calls to mind when we had the disparity study and the recommendations were brought forth, that one of the recommendations was to continue to have presentations from our purchasers and our bidders, Mrs. Jackson and company, on how we were progressing along in the findings and how we're addressing those findings. So perhaps this is a good time to say that the board would like to visit adding this as an agenda item for a presentation on like where we, the status of our disparity study. It doesn't have to be January, but just kind of bringing it up that we would probably want to add it as an agenda item soon.
We can definitely look at that. I know that they just had appreciation luncheon for the members of their committee, and I will look back and see when, because I know that we just had them come and present, but I can't remember the exact month, and so maybe we'll just make it annual and look at that month.
Okay.
And bring them back that month.
Yes, that would be wonderful. Just let us know. Okay, so that item is, the motion's been made and seconded. All in favor of approving the wireless upgrade purchase, please raise your hand high and say aye?
Aye.
All right, that motion passes unanimously, I believe. Now we are at the charter system intent to apply for two, in 2026.
I move that we approve the charter system intent to apply.
I need a second. No, I need, I just need a second.
A second.
Okay, thank you. No, 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 you're fine. I just need, oh, no, no, I wasn't saying I need a second to think. I was saying I need someone to second. Yes, exactly, sorry. Sorry if I, if that confused anyone. Okay, motion made by Dr. Jaeger and seconded by Dr. Gant. Any discussion? We had our presentation earlier, pretty robust conversation, so any thoughts? Do you want to go down the line just to make sure?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Dr. Jaeger?
So I've been around for one of these before, and I just feel like we are finally taking advantage, full advantage of this opportunity that we took a little while to figure out, and, and I would love to keep going with it. I think we're doing some good things, and yes, I agree that accountability, we need to be a little bit better at measuring the actual impact of this versus some of the other things we're doing, but I think this is, this is a good thing, so I'm very much for this.
Dr. Yeager?
I would agree. Just want to reiterate, I think, the importance of being able to really zone in on like the things we're doing and their effectiveness and being able to understand exactly the impact we're having, because this was designed for students who are struggling, you know, and students are still struggling. And so understanding how it's impacting particular, you know, communities, and I know it is, and I know that Dr. Barlam and Dr. Nobles are like the right people, I mean, I know they've been, they understand this sort of intimately, but so it's more so just a public reminder for us to really hone in and figure out the effectiveness and then how we replicate some of the interventions and programs, but I do plan to support.
Ms. Bagby? Ms. Davis?
Again, I feel strongly that the charter model is the one that we chose because it would give us the opportunity to do some different things and to address some longstanding problems, and I am just not seeing that in the 12 years that we've been in that. And I'm looking for something more definitive than take a look at it. I would really like to see the evaluation of how we are performing under this model and what do we see? I hear that we have school improvement plans, and I want to hear more about, are we effective in executing those improvement plans, and what do those improvement plans also speak to the underperformance of the children that are still underperforming in the district? I have desperately in need of understanding, do we have a way to actually not always have that last line that talks about the children that still aren't able to, to prosper and thrive in our school system? So to continue to support waivers that aren't getting to the whole purpose of having the waivers to begin with is, is a concern for me. I will not be voting for this.
Mr. Denson?
Thank you. I did just have a quick question on just clarification. So I understand that we're, we'd be voting on tonight to start the intent to apply. Does, and then I see on the timeline, it says in September, October, submission of application to the board for review. Does the board vote on the actual final application?
Mr. Pruitt, what does it say in regards to the charter system? Is there a vote on the application or just a vote to approve for us to apply?
So there's a resolution attached to the agenda item, which I guess is what's being approved, and it says that you are approving the application. I don't even know if the application exists yet.
Okay, and that, I guess that was, that was my concern. I'm fine to vote to start the process, but I am not comfortable voting to, yeah, approve an application that doesn't exist yet, because I don't, I don't even know what it says.
So that's not a problem to bring the application back to you all prior to submission?
Okay.
And so I think that the ask tonight is to approve that we are going to start this application process, because it does take a year to complete.
Sure.
And so we wouldn't bring it to you in October for the first time and say, here, we need you to sign off. It's, this is the plan for developing, and is there a commitment that, yes, the work that we'll do over the course of the year will be something that you would be looking to approve with any recommendations for modifications, because there is an interest in us continuing as a charter district?
Okay, so we, in that October, September, October timeline, we will not only be reviewing it, we will also be voting for, for submission?
For submission.
Okay, thank you.
So does that mean the resolution is not being approved just going forward with the process?
That means that they would just be approving that we are going to start the process to complete the application. We can bring the application back to you all to approve the final submission.
Okay.
So the resolution does not need to be signed until that October, November.
Okay. And I'm assuming that that will not impact the submission at, at all, if the resolution is not signed until it's voted on?
They, so, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Barlam, is there anything you have to submit with our signatures of an intent to apply now? Or do we just have to notify them that we are planning to apply?
We will notify the Godot that we are planning to apply again, to renew our charter application. We will bring the resolution that Mr. Pruitt referred to back once the application is formed, and that can be signed at that time in September, October.
Okay. All right, thank you for that clarification, and I'll make sure that I don't blindly sign things like I normally do. Just kidding. Okay, we have a motion on the floor.
Could I see something?
Oh, oh, yes, sure. Mr. Evans?
So I, I have this, I have this weird position because I, I'm, I'm in our schools with our student teachers, and, and I also go through other counties that are charter schools, not charter schools. And I'm having a real hard time because I'm not seeing a real difference in how we're teaching our kids in the elementary schools any differently than the kids that are in the schools that are not charter schools. And if we were doing all of this innovative, great stuff, and, and there are some great things, I'm not, don't get me wrong, I mean, but it just seems like there's half the county that's not getting that, primarily the east side, right? We have seven schools that we have, that are underperforming according to the state, which I, I disagree with, because, but that's a whole other thing. So I'm, I'm having a hard time seeing how this benefits us. Now, I, I get the Career Academy, I love the Career Academy. I mean, you know, James and I, we used to hang out at the Career Academy, so, you know, I have, I have a soft spot there, but, you know, I'm just, I'm, I'm, I'm not sold on this, because I don't think, I, I think that the, I, I think that we have the grand ideas, but when it gets into the trenches, it doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't happen. And that's my concern, is that, you know, when we, when we, when we have products where everyone is teaching the same thing across the county, it, there isn't that room to be what the charter asks for. And so maybe in our, maybe in our, our subsequent conversations, we could talk about ways of, of having teachers really go and, and maybe be that teacher that they, that they wanted to be when they went into teacher ed, like we, we all did. You know, we all wanted to save the world, one child at a time, and that's, I, I just don't see that. And so for right now, I'm going to be a no vote on this one.
Okay, so we do have that motion on the floor. The only thing I'll, I'll add, and I'll, I'll be as brief as I can, is I, I do think, I agree with a lot of our members, we don't have the metrics that we really need to make informed decisions about whether this thing is working or not. We have asked multiple years for metrics that we just never get. And then second, many of us have also expressed discontent in us not thinking bigger. If we have the latitude to, to, for this flexibility, we, we have implemented things on very small scales, but we have the opportunity to think really big and be bold and be brave with how we want to express these flexibility wa, and waiver options, and I, I don't think we're thinking big enough. So yes, I'll be voting yes to exploring and moving forward with this application process, but I think, you've heard many concerns from various board members, so I think when you, in a year, when this comes before the, the board as a presentation of the full application, that I think you'll, you'll see that the board really wants to be very measured in your expectations for metrics and, and how we really think big about making these changes that are going to be substantial enough to make advances with our, our children who are, our most vulnerable children who are failing. Okay, we have a motion on the floor. All in favor of, and that was the motion, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All in favor of approving the charter system intent to apply in 2026, please raise your hand high and say aye?
Aye.
Okay, all opposed?
Three, four, three, passes.
Okay, so that motion passes four, three. And now we are at item nine for our facilities updates. First up is, uh-oh, did I skip something? First up is, uh-oh, did I skip something? Oh, yes, my computer's dead, so I'm not seeing the, okay. Now we've got item nine, our personnel. All in, it's not working. All in favor, oh, no.
We have to move to approve the personnel.
I need a second.
Second.
Okay, that motion's made by Dr. Yeager and seconded by, by Mr. Evans. All in favor of approving the personnel report for December? Please raise your hand high and say aye?
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? Okay, so that motion passes unanimously. Now we have our, at facilities updates. And our first one is the Sphloss monthly report. Is Mr. Gilbert here or, oh, hello?
My name's Troy Basset, I'm project manager in the Sphloss office here. Mr. Gilbert wasn't able to make it. So first off, we're finishing, we're finishing up at Cedar Shoals. Hope to be major, complete, major completion this Christmas. Right now, we're just finishing up punch items there. And then at Gaines, do we have the pictures? Yes, this morning. And at Gaines, they've, they're moving along. They've actually got the roof and most of the blockwork done on the three extensions. We're finishing up in the back. We had to move a sewer line, a storm line, and a fire line that would been up under the new expansion, the new expanded wing. And so we're just about finished with that. Do you control or do I? So what you see here, this was them putting in the sewer line. They had to go down about twenty-four feet and put that in. The next slide, that's the storm line, which was down about ten feet. And both of these ran diagonally right through where the new wing is going to be. And the new wing is going to be between the existing building and the trailer, the modulars you see there. So that's the storm line, they finished the install of that. And then, so you can kind of see all of that level. We're waiting on the county, they have to come put in two valves. And they, we're just been waiting on them for about a month and a half to do that so that we can start the foundation in the back. You can see here the three extension wings. And in those, you're getting two classrooms, a staff restroom, and staff storage on each, on each of the halls. Moving on down, you can kind of see from the side. That block is actually all the way to the roof as of today. This picture was taken, I think, Monday or Tuesday. You can see that we've already done the new roof, new HVAC on the facility. Keep on scrolling, that's, that's Wing C, keep on. That's all of the stills on site for Wing D. That's what you see in the bottom left there. The next picture is, like I said, just an overview, you can see the new roof. It's a TPO roof, so it's got a twenty-five year warranty on it. So it, hopefully will fix all the leaking issues we've had. You can see the roofs on the extension insulation sitting on top. They'll be starting installing that here in the next week or so. The next image, scrolling down, that's the new PL room. We're actually adding a PL room that will be large enough for them to have the entire staff in one room to have meetings instead of having to do it in the cafeteria. That's also, they should start the blockwork on that early next week. And so that's kind of update on Gaines. They've already taken on the backside, they've taken the brick off of the gym and putting in a temporary wall there. We're expanding the gym because the basketball court was not large enough for the elementary programs that we had. And then we're moving a stage into the gym so that we can expand the seating in the cafeteria without having to go outside the building to do that. So that's kind of the updates on Gaines right now. As far as, do I do the facilities, the other facility parts right now, or is that a? That's just that report? Okay. And then I guess other facilities, you know, just updates. We finished the final two and the HVAC upgrades that we had over the summer, there was five. We finished Winterville and Barrow over the Thanksgiving break. We also added a generator at Barrow, so now their freezer and cooler in the kitchen is on emergency backup, so if they lose power, they don't lose the food. We've also started working on bid packages for new roofs at the H.T. Edwards complex, ELC East, HB Stroud, Johnny Lee Burks, Timothy, and Central. And Central is just over the Crawford Gym. And so we'll be putting out bids for those here in the next month to start that process. And so at this point, are there any questions?
Are there any questions? Do you want to?
I have to bring this forward from the CLC, may I?
Yes, please.
Thank you. What about School C?
School C, right now, there's, there's not enough students in the area to justify the School C, so there is no movement on that. We monitor growth and where the new construction is. And, because I know the developer has asked to buy that property. And, but right now, there is not, we have, we've actually, on the elementary level, we've kind of stayed steady. So there is not enough demand for, to build that at this time.
Ms. Backby, do you have any questions for Mr. Basset? Dr. Yeager? Mr. Denson? Dr. Gant? I have no questions ma'am.
All right, and thank you so much, but I think, are, are you going to stay up for the CLC update or was, or did you combine those? You combined them?
I think so, I mean, I'm not sure.
Okay, okay, and Ms. Davis?
What does he usually say?
You just didn't, usually the Sphloss revenue is about it. That's the only thing we didn't talk about.
Okay, I think the Sphloss revenue last month was about three point three million. I don't have the exact number with me. I think it's in the report, but we've been on a steady trend of three point three this year on the revenue. Anything else? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, let's see, all right, thank you, Mr. Baskin. Now we are at our information items. And we'll start with the early head start, head start policy council meeting minutes and reports. Mr. Denson?
Yes, thank you. Yeah, from, this is from the August meeting, I believe, August, September. And, yeah, for this one, we approved some of the, the budget change request, the carryover request, and a couple of personnel recommendations that this board has already passed, so thank you.
And now the Athens Area Community Foundation. I don't believe our representative is here, okay. And then lastly, Envision Athens, is there anything to report for Envision Athens?
Nothing to report.
Okay. All right, and now we are at our superintendent report.
All right, good evening, everyone. So next Friday, December nineteenth, will be our last day before our winter break.
There is early release? Oop, your mic turned off.
There's early release for our high schools on the eighteenth and nineteenth as they will be finalizing or taking their final exams. We also will have closure of all of our district offices and schools December twentieth through January fourth, with teachers coming back for a planning day on January fifth and students returning on January sixth. I was pleased to be able to visit the Rotary Club of Athens, where our very own Dr. Yeager was the featured speaker. And she shared about her experiences and work around climate change. And I know that I personally truly learned a lot and gained a lot of insight and knowledge around that presentation. I would also like to just remind everyone that it is not too late to have your taxes for the state of Georgia credited to the Clark County School District through the Georgia Peach Education Tax Credit Program. Our projects for CCSD include Dental Health Clinic at Clark Middle, our literacy campaign for a culture of literacy, and our ACCA still has their campaigns that are going on as well. And it is a quick and easy process to have your tax dollars allocated towards one of our district initiatives. If anybody wants information, then I know that Dr. Moore has flyers that she has been handing out, and she is getting the word out around town. And this is also applicable to any Georgia resident. And so, don't be afraid to share it with relatives that are even outside of our Athens, Clark County area. Also looking forward to joining you all next Tuesday. For those of you who can join us at Hilltop at six thirty, don't forget that if you have not RSVP, then do that through the calendar invite that was sent by Ms. Palmer. So with that, just happy holidays and thank you. And I think next up is ACCA. You have the minutes there, but I will defer to Dr. Elder or to Mr. Evans if there's any additional information from the ACCA meeting for October.
I do not have additional information, just excited about the West Broad opportunities. They were excited to hear those pieces of the future.
Okay, all right, thank you. And yeah, thank you to ACCA for hosting us at our joint meeting. And it's always wonderful to visit that campus and to eat their amazing food from their chef and future student chefs. So now we are at item twelve, unless there's anything anybody needs to, other than happy holidays?
Make a motion that we adjourn.
Okay, motion made and seconded, all in favor of adjourning. Raise your hand and say aye?
Aye.
All right, that motion passes, we'll see you all in 2026. Thank you so much.